Session, but we had no reportable action on for A and we've continued for B and C until after the meeting. So that brings us to, and welcome everybody, thank you for being here tonight. That brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice proud.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And just a reminder, we are, as we usually do, film and livestream these meetings on our YouTube channel. And also there's coffee and some cookies out in the back kitchen area if you'd like to partake during the meeting. So that brings us to item number six, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments? This is an opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight. So, yes, come on up, please. And if you could fill out a speaker slip after you're done speaking, that'd be great. If you could just introduce yourself and go ahead, yeah, right there.
Not sure if this is the exact appropriate time. Kevin Platt, Battalion Chief with Contra Costa Fire, and here to give a brief update for the fire district specifically to do with Lafayette.
Okay, that's great. So we, public comment is three minutes. If you could do it in three minutes, that'd be fantastic. Thank you very much.
So, not sure if you're all aware, but Fire Station 16 is under construction in Lafayette, nearing completion, expected at the end of April, beginning of May. And Fire Engine Number 16 is open already, co-located with Number 15 on Mount Diablo. So, you have two fire sta, one fire station being built, and this one's doubled up, right here on 15. They're actually on a wreck right now on 24. So, I believe you probably have been alerted to all that, but they wanted me to come and make sure you guys were aware and offer any questions if you had any.
Okay, any questions for the speaker? I'll just say thank you very much. I mean, it was great news when we heard from the new chief, and, you know, I think the community has been waiting eagerly for what's about to come and what's happened and what's about to come with the station being fully operational.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we're very, very fortunate to have the best in the business in Confire supporting our community. So, thank you on behalf of the entire city.
We are happy to help.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other public comment? Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. 7A, our Administrative Services Director, Tracy Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce you to the two newest members of the city of Lafayette. First, we have our new Assistant Engineer, Danielle Sanchez. Danielle is a graduate of Cal Poly, just like your Public Works and Engineering Director. And we turned her from the dark side. She used to work in the private sector on development projects, and she's especially interested in helping us with our clean water program. We're very happy to have her working on that. And apparently, although we haven't seen them in real life, she has two very cute Chow Chow dogs, which we're hoping she'll bring to the office soon. So, welcome, Danielle. Next, we have Patrick Murray. He is our new construction inspector. Patrick is a licensed general contractor. He's a retired police officer. He also managed the code enforcement unit, so I'm sure that's going to come in very handy in the new position. He is also a longtime resident of the city of Lafayette and a graduate of St. Mary's College. And he says it's okay to call him Pat. Welcome, Pat.
Welcome, Patrick and Danielle, to an incredibly awesome staff, and we look forward to working closely with you, tight-knit family here. So, thank you very much, and a round of applause. Thank you, Tracy, very much. So we'll go on to 7B, and very pleased to welcome Director John Coleman from the East Bay Municipal Utility District to provide an update to the city. Mr. Coleman, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burks, council members. I've not met either Susan or Stephen. Look forward to working with you. I left my business cards, so if you need to reach me, I know Teresa and Mike and Cameron have been able to do that frequently. So my name's John Coleman. I represent the city of Lafayette, the portions of Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, that are East Bay Mud Service area, all the way down through the San Ramon Valley, and then the east side of San Ramon of 680, and been very fortunate to be able to represent all these great people for so many years. I need to go a little bit over our water system here. I've done this in the past. We get our water from snowmelt. We've had a lot of that this year, about 165% of normal, which is phenomenal. And the water is stored at Party Reservoir, and then it goes through 90 miles of aqueduct pipelines through the delta and originally by our treatment plant near Larky Park, and then to Lafayette and to Arinda, and distributed throughout our area. We serve about 1.4 million people in our service area, and we have 325 square miles of service area. So, it rained, it snowed, it's raining again, nobody thought it would now, but it is. We're in phenomenal shape. We are literally releasing a lot of water to make sure when the snow does start melting that we don't have flood issues on the McCullum River for downtown, downstream, and Lodi and elsewhere. And as you can see, we're a little bit above percent of average, a little bit underneath the percent of capacity. That, again, is because we want to make sure that we have adequate space to store all that water, and it's going to be a banner year. We've actually brought in about $6 million in hydro power generation so far as a result of that, and that's also good for everybody. So, into September, we look at September 30th, what is our water supply situation? 2019, we're full. We're going to be at 630,000 acre feet, 1,000 acre feet, and you can see when we're in the midst of our drought that ended in 2016, how far we were down in our supply situation and how desperate it was. We had a good year, and then the last couple of years, even the last year was below average. The usage was below average as well. But 2019, we're full, we're brimming, and can't wait to be able to be in the same situation, hopefully, next year. We have many long-term water supply partnerships with East Bay Mud. We built the Freeport Regional Water Project with the County of Sacramento. It's a $542 million project. We paid 48%. The County of Sacramento paid 52%. That's our insurance policy that allowed us during the drought to actually be able to transfer water from Yuba County, Placer County, bringing it into our service area. Had we not had that in place in 2015, not knowing what the next water year was going to be, it would have been most likely illegal to water anything outside your house because we did not know what the next year was going to bring. So we're able to bring the transfers in, and we're also looking at an agreement tomorrow with Placer County Water to enter into a long-term water agreement. So in future drought years, which will happen, we'll be able to have that water, be able to bring it into our system. We're looking at desalinization as a possibility in the Bay Area, and we have entered into an agreement in San Joaquin County for storing water underground, and that took many years to come to terms because of long-term hostility to East Bay Mud in the valley. And we're also working with Conocoast Water District on the expansion capabilities at Los Veleros, and I'm hopeful that we do it, because, again, that will help both, it'll help the entire county to be able to do that and to be linked together that way. McCullum River, we have had a huge success story on the return of our salmon. Even during the midst and height of the drought, we're the only river system in the state of California that exceeded the average for return on salmon. We spend about $5 million a year on our fish hatchery with California Fish and Wildlife, and returns have been phenomenal. And, again, it's an investment that the board decided to make. It actually helped us when we were in the midst of the drought, when the State Water Resources Control Board said, "Everybody's got to cut, 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 and you got to do this, this, and this, and you're going to wait." We're making this investment, we've actually improved our fish hatchery operations where other parts of the state was not the case, and that benefited us actually in our negotiations with the State Water Board and State Fish and Wildlife Service as a result. We're investing dollars. Yes, everybody knows that we pay a lot for water, and people do not like rates. I understand that, because I get a lot of emails and phone calls about it. But our system is old. In some cases, it's over 100 years old, the pipes. We're having to go through and make sure that we capitalize the pipes. We're investing for resilience. We know that there's going to be a major earthquake at some point, as in the newspaper, I think, today or yesterday in the Conocoast Times, talking about the vulnerability of that. We were actually the first water utility in the United States after Loma Prieta, and we spent about $130 million to, on our water system to make sure that when it does happen, we're not down for as long as we would be otherwise. So our big issues are safety, reliability, and water quality. And we've also been able to, with our money that we've generated, we've put aside $95 million in our rate stabilization fund, so that will help in future droughts, and it's also going to help us if a major event does take place, we'll have capital available to tap into right away, not waiting for FEMA or perhaps the state of California to come to terms here. Our service area, we have five local reservoirs. One is in this community, I think, but it's not a drinking water reservoir. It's classified by that, but it is not used for drinking water. Bubrione, Upper San Leandro, Chabot, and, I should know it off the top of my head, whatever. There's five of them. So that is about eight, seven to eight percent of our water is local runoff that goes into these reservoirs, then it's distributed. What's important to remember, we have 4,200 miles of pipeline, so that's essentially walking from, or flying from San Francisco to New York to Chicago. That's how much responsibility of pipeline we have, and, again, some of it is over 100 years old, and so we're trying to make sure that we are prepared, and it's, takes a lot of time and money to do just that. Our pipeline rebuild, we used to only do about five to 10 miles a year in pipeline rebuilding. Our goal is 15 miles in fiscal year 19 and 20 to get to 20 miles by, if you're 21, you're going to say, "Wait, you've got 4,200 miles of pipeline, that's going to take a long, long time to do it." Well, hopefully with the pipes that we're putting in now, and we're looking at new technology with pipes that are much more advanced, they'll last a lot longer in the process. But it does cost more to go in and fix a pipe that breaks versus going in where we know there's problems and doing, and fixing it ahead of time versus waiting for a major break, which happens. And every morning, all the board members get an email from the staff, tells us of all the breaks that occurred in the last 24 hours, the city, the cross streets, and approximately how many gallons of water were lost. So it's, they're trying to keep us up on that. We're also looking at timeline and major capital projects, the water treatment plants, and you're going, "Wow, it's, why are you fixing all your water treatment plants?" Well, EPA, Department of Health Services, everybody says you've got to do this, this, and this. In order to comply and not be fined, we need to upgrade also to make sure that we're in compliance. We're doing aqueduct lining. So we have, again, three aqueducts coming down from Party to here. We also have the Lafayette Aqueduct, which has leaked over the years, and so that is going to be fixed, is coming up here. And we have towers and tunnels that we need to make sure that are operational, and, again, meet all the current safety standards and requirements that were brought down, both by the state and federal government. And open-cut reservoirs, which you're well aware of, I think Leland is one that we voted, I know it is, one we voted on in December. It was controversial here, but it's going to be redone and be completed, I believe, in 2024. And so there's a lot of capital improvement projects that we're working on, as well as large pipeline diameters that we need to work on to make sure that in the event of an earthquake or another disaster, that we are able to deliver water to our customers in a timely way, and people are not without water for too long. So, our costs are not fixed, nor are our revenues. About 92% of our costs are fixed, 8% variable. The variable is really chemicals and energy, when you get right down to it. If we sell more water, we're going to use more chemicals and more energy in order to do that. And our revenue is about 72% fixed, 28% fixed, 72% variable. This is actually where I have a difference from my colleagues. I get along great with them on the board. I would rather see our fixed revenues at a higher percent, and we actually had this discussion at our board workshop on budgets recently, because when we do go into a drought and we're told we're going to cut back, our revenue stream dries up, and then everybody goes, "Oh, well, you're going to reduce rates after the drought." No, we're not. That doesn't happen. I could say it is, but I'd be lying. The fact of the matter is, is revenue stream dries up. If we had higher on the fixed revenue, that would mean there'd be less of a financial impact coming out of the drought or while we're in the drought. So we've had healthy debate at East Bay Mud about that, and right now, I'm not on the winning side of that issue, but I think more people are starting to see that it does have financial impact, because it means we can do, can't do some of the things they want to do, because we don't have the revenue stream. Our water supply, well, take a look at that. Look at the red line, shows the population growth. That's about a 30% increase since 1970. The dark line on top is water consumption on a per-day use. It's down about 70%. So when people go, "We shouldn't do this or that," and you hear this during the drought, "Can't have this built or that built," the reality of the situation is, we're using much less today than we were in the 1970s, when the population was 30% lower than it is in today. And a lot of it is people done a phenomenal job on conservation hardware. We go to the store to buy things, it's all conservation and the rebates that we have as well, but it does have an impact on our budget. Our budget. So we have a healthy budget, $2.34 billion. We do a two-year budget, and gives you an idea of, most of it is water, 86%, but what it does show you is where the money is going. About 67% is for capital investment-related, 21% for debt service, 33% for operations, 46% for capital appropriations. We're actually moving away from, less from bond money and more towards pay-as-you-go, so that will actually, long-term, have, be healthier for our books and the rate payers as well in that process. And this is where some of the money is going, so you can see it on the, and, oh, from fiscal year 20 to 21, and what the impact is in terms of our grand total of $2.3 billion that we'll be spending over the next two years. And we had initially projected a 7% rate increase in fiscal year 20, 21, and five years are out. We have been able, staff has been able to do a phenomenal job of watching what we spend, so now they're coming to us with a six and a quarter percent rate increase, even though our water sales are still depressed. If they were higher, it would be actually probably less of a percent increase, but it's coming, it's being forecasted and proposed, which we'll be voting on later this year to be a six and a quarter percent. So we're trying to do the process. We are going through the 218. We've had two public hearing, two workshops in this process, and we're establishing what we need to do in order for, charge of customers for customer class, which we're required to do by law as well. Those are the two workshops. The mailing goes out April 26. We will hold a public hearing on June 11th, assuming that the board does approve those rates. It'll take effect on July 1, which is our fiscal year. So, if you have any questions, that's my contact information. If you call me on my cell, I think I'm pretty good at returning phone calls and emails, and for that matter, for the public as well. I'd also like to thank Mayor Burks. I was not aware that we had a gate issue at the Lafayette Reservoir. And so you raised it, and it's been fixed. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. But a lot of the things that we do, there's a lot going on in a lot of things, and Catherine Horn, who's here, who's sort of our district person out and about, she does a phenomenal job, you know, relaying information to me. But if there's an opportunity, whether it be a council meeting or another meeting, to go out and speak to a group, I'd love to do it and be able to make sure that I can represent you to the best of my ability.
Great. Any questions? Right, maybe I could just start by thanking you. On the gate issue that, you know, Karen Mulvaney, who a lot of you know, raised it, and I think it was on Facebook, my Facebook site, and it's those little things, and Mr. Director Coleman jumped right on it and had staff get it taken care of, but it's those little things, I think, that really make a difference in our community and shows that we're serviced by a phenomenal utility district, and we've got a phenomenal director who does really believe in Lafayette and is here for us. So I'd like to thank you for that.
Well, I grew up in Lafayette. I passed Chamber President of Lafayette.
Me, I've just got, just one question, and you may have answered it. On the capital projects, on the earthquake stability issue with our reservoir tower.
Oh, yeah. We are, we have submitted some designs to the, Division of Dam Safety to look at, to evaluate. It is, if it were to collapse during a major seismic earthquake, would there be flooding downtown? No. The amount of flow out of the pipe is, I think, seven cubic feet per second. So it's minimal, it'd be like a heavy rainstorm in the creek. But the fear is, you know, if that were to happen, the fear that could be started, and quite frankly, we need to make sure it's seismically safe. We're coming up with some designs. I know people want it, kept looking the same way it is. I understand that, but, and I'll be honest with you, I'm also going to look at the cost, at what it costs in terms of deciding what is the right design. Yes, it's iconic for a lot of reasons, and, but the bottom line is, if it's $100 million more to have the same design versus one that's functional and all good honesty, I don't, I couldn't support that, because that's about a 7% rate increase to do that, and that's just not good public policy. I'm hoping to come up with a design that either keeps integrity of the current structure or builds it to what is similarly there today.
Okay. If you could just keep us up to date on timelines and, you know, sort of, you know, insights into where your staff is going around some of the designs, I think our public would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
As much as possible. We can put it on our website, we can do some stuff on social media. That would be great.
We'll do that.
Appreciate the answer there.
So any, Vice Mayor?
So John, thanks for coming, as you always do. It's always a good report, whether it's a good year for water or not, so, great report. I do appreciate the water tower issue, the fact that you're even going forward with different ideas than what was proposed originally, is, thank you. That's our interest at heart, and I appreciate that. I was wondering about the Los Veleros project. If, in fact, you got involved in that, would you be blending water with CCWD, or would that just be a separate project? Do you know?
It would be blending, putting water in, and it would be a backup reserve supply of water, and we would be treating it similar to what our water comes off the Sacramento River for our Freeport project.
Okay.
We're upgrading our facilities in the event we need to do that in the future. I think, in this case, it's also good public policy. It's something that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen and when, or how long a future drought is with climate change, but the fact is, we go through droughts, we went through a very long drought. If we have the ability where we can tell people, "Yes, you use water reasonably, you know, cut back 15% versus, no, you can't use water, you're allocated 30 gallons per person per day," that's not going to fly either, and people would have a right to be upset.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Director Coleman? Yeah, Councilmember Bliss?
Couple of quick ones. So, just want to echo the thanks for you being out here, speaking to council this evening. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. As a resident of Lafayette, obviously I get to interact with East Bay Mud in various ways as a user, and also the East Bay Mud properties, and encountering East Bay Mud staff pretty regularly, and just, it's always just been a great agency to deal with on all fronts. So thank you for.
Pull it closer.
Is that better?
That's better, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I was just saying, it's, East Bay Mud's always been a great agency to deal with and encounter in various ways in the community. I just had a question, two quick questions. You mentioned that there was $6 million in hydro power revenue.
That's so far this year. We budgeted $3.8 million.
Okay. And given the fact that there's a lot of changes going on in the power market these days on various fronts, can you put that, the general expectation for this year in context? Do you expect, I mean, I assume that revenue's up from prior years, but what do you foresee as the trend going forward in terms of hydro power as a revenue source for the district?
Well, it would, if we're in a good year, it's going to be great to have it, although ironically, the, when the MCE is buying that power, they're buying it at less than they would during a dry year.
Right.
Because they need the green power. Also, actually, Party doesn't get counted as green power because of the size of the reservoir, which is, I think, a decision Sacramento needs to fix. It's already there, it's different than building a giant reservoir, because when Party was built, it was the largest reservoir in the country at the time, in the 1920s. And so it's considered a large reservoir, and so that's not considered, quote-unquote, "green" power as a result, even though it's there today, it's producing power, and that's a policy change that needs to happen in Sacramento. We're going to see more of it. We're actually the only water waste, we're both wastewater, too, on the other side. We're the only utility in the United States that actually produces more power than we use, between methane, hydro power, and we're going into solar as well now. So, but we're, I think there's one other company in Austria or Australia that falls in that category as well. But, yeah, it's going to be a bigger future, and it's going to be dictated by AB 321, I believe, and doing more green energy, and it's a question of where's it going to come from.
Thanks. And my other question just has to do with the chart you showed, really helpful chart showing just the aggregate per capita use and that trend over time going downward. Is that chart showing residential plus commercial, just like overall?
That's, that is residential. It's per capita use, correct? Residential only, yeah, it's residential strictly.
Okay. And so any sense you have of the work that the district's doing? I know there's a lot of emphasis focused on conservation and efficient use on the residential front, and with good reason, right? Because we're all making choices as residents every day about how to use water, how to conserve water. Is there anything the district does in terms of working with commercial customers?
Oh, absolutely.
And what are some of the highlights there?
What we have coming up, I believe in May, it's we highlight the private side and public non-residential that actually have made the greatest strides in water conservation. We have an aggressive water conservation budget, not only for homeowners in cities, but also for the public and private sector as well, and their usage is down in addition to the single-family homeowner, the single, it's just down. And I need to tell people, you can use your water. If it goes in the gutter, you're probably using too much, but you can use water in your yard, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, real quick, you mentioned going into solar. Can you give me an example of what you may be doing?
Well, we have entered into some agreements on solar. I've asked staff to take a look at, up by Lake Comanche off of Highway 12. We have a lot of land there, and one side of the dam actually has a southern exposure. Can we actually go into more solar agreements there in order to generate the solar power, and then we would sell it most likely to the MCE.
Okay, I, do we have any, I know we have one public comment for this topic, and if we have additional public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker card, but.
Can I raise one thing?
If you, yeah.
Not related to East Bay Mud.
Yes.
Thank you for your email today, by the way. Some of you are aware I got hit by a red light runner Friday morning going to work on Pleasant Hill Road, leaving my house. I don't understand, and today I get that my insurance company said I'm 100% not at fault, but the, two police officers came very promptly, good, one on a bike, one on a car, and I said, "Are you going to cite the red light runner?" And they said, "No." And I'm going, "Well, an off-duty cop was at the red light. He told you that this guy ran the red light." And they said, "Well, we'll let the insurance companies decide, then we'll decide whether we cite him." I don't understand that as a policy. And then I asked for, "Are you going to do a report?" And they said, "No." And when I contacted my insurance company, they asked if there was a report. I said, "No." And when I contacted the guy who hit me, his insurance company, he asked if there's a report, and I said, "No." So I don't, it's, doesn't make sense why, again, the officers were very professional there promptly, but why they wouldn't cite somebody when you have a witness to what happened? And secondarily, why was there no police report? Because if he chooses not to talk to his insurance agent, which he has not done as of this afternoon, they may decide that I'm partially at fault.
Yeah.
Which doesn't make any sense. So that was my one thing.
No, I, you know, I saw the photos of your car. I'm very glad you're okay, and for you to be here tonight is amazing. So first and foremost, I'm glad you're okay. If I could maybe ask the interim city manager to touch base with Chief Aldritt and follow up, and then follow up the Director Coleman, that would be fantastic.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Okay.
And you have somebody in public to talk about?
We do have one public speaker slip who I think has a question for you. So Lynn Hedane?
Right here.
Yes. Lynn, would you like to come up?
I can just, good job.
We need to record you, if, yeah.
Sorry, that's critical.
Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, I just, Lynn Hedane, 649 Los Palos Drive, used to be right around the corner from John's house. I just wanted to know when you're going to be repairing the East Bay Mud Aqueduct. That's been my perpetual question for, I don't know how many years, and you, first I heard, what was it, 2015, and then it went to 2017, I mean, 1917?
There was a spite up there.
19, where am I, 2017?
We actually, it was listed under there, under, I don't know.
I'll get one, about 23.
Yes.[1782.04]
LEF1?
Yeah.
2023.
2023, so what...
And how much are you going to do?
We're going to fix the entire pipeline that needs to be replaced. It's very frustrating when we have a leak, and I understand public owes in a drought. My God, you're not fixing your own leaks. And I understand that. We have, yes, we have a large budget. We also have a lot of pipeline and reservoirs and pumping stations, so it falls in the priority of which is the most severe and being fixed.
Okay, but it is going to be done.
It's right up there, it's the third, the Lafayette 1 Green Bar.
Cross our fingers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Director Coleman, thank you very much.
Very much.
All right, and no further public comments, so we will advance to item eight, which is our consent calendar, which we typically will vote on in one single motion unless a member of the council would like to pull an item or a member of the public would like to pull an item. Do we have any items that our council would like to pull?
I don't.
None? Any on this side? Yes, Councilmember Geringer?
I don't.
None? Councilmember Bliss? None? Okay.
I'd be happy to move the consent calendar.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. So we will now move to item nine A, a report from our interim city manager on MTC's CASA Compact and Tri-Valley Cities Housing and Policy Framework.
Thank you, Mayor Burks. Good evening, council and members of the public. I wanted to give you an update on the efforts of Contra Costa Cities to wrap its, their arms around the CASA Compact as well as the legislation that has resulted from the compact. You had a joint meeting in March with the La Mirinda Cities, and you directed the city managers to draft a letter outlining our concerns on the CASA Compact, and we are doing that. The mayors are getting together this Thursday to talk about it. Additionally, the Tri-Valley five communities of Dublin Pleasant and Livermore, San Ramon and Danville have been in the forefront of reviewing the CASA Compact and pending legislation. And together, they have come up with a really good report on the impacts of the legislation on local jurisdictions. That report was reviewed by the Public Managers Association in March and April, in February and March, and the public managers have asked for a county-wide framework similar to what the Tri-Valley Cities have developed. We have completed that work and will be discussing that this Thursday. The intent is to really rally all the cities around the protection of local land use control, to identify concerns that we all share, and also to identify in the pending bills those concepts that we can rally behind. And I hope to bring that, the county-wide framework with accompanying resolution either at the end of this month or early next month. CASA has, is behind us. What we really need to focus on is the bills that the legislature is currently considering, and there are a number of them. So, there are a couple of things that the public managers are doing to rally the troops, so to speak. One is we're promoting the April 24th League Legislative Action Day. It's a day where all the elected officials from local jurisdictions are invited to Sacramento to meet with the legislators on various bills that are of interest to them. Good thing is that on that very same day, one of the most impactful bills, SB 50, which is the Weiner bill, will be considered by the Senate Government Relations Committee. So the League is working on a way to get all the elected officials at the hearing to participate in that hearing. SB 50, as many of us know, is, I would say, much more impactful and has a much more negative impact on local governments than AB 2923 did. AB 2923, or the BART bill last year, focused on BART-owned lands. And so we were able to quantify what kind of impact it would have, because BART owns a discrete number of properties. AB 20, SB 5 really covers land within a half mile of the BART station. And so I wanted to just demonstrate to you what that means for Lafayette. So, this is the BART station, and the circle is a half-mile radius. And I just highlighted some local streets so we know where the impact is. Brook Street to the south, it extends almost up to Risa Road, this is Dolores Drive. Up north goes, this is Nordstrom Lane, so it covers Happy Valley Glen. And to the east, this is First Street. So, land within this area is vulnerable to development, to higher-density development. And some of the key features of SB 50 is that it removes any local control or local standards and allows increases in density, in height, in floor area ratio. Additionally, it greatly reduces the parking requirements for any projects within this half-mile radius. So SB 50 is one of the many bills that we need to track, and I would encourage this council and our Tri-Valley council members to attend the Ledge Action Day on the 24th. Going back to the whole CASA Compact, and the Vice Mayor and I attended Mayor's Conference last Thursday, where two council members, Danville's Noel Arnarich and Concord's Laura Hoffmeister, and Councilmember Geringer also attended, as well as Councilmember Kendall, sorry about that. They were appointed to the CASA Compact Legislative Task Force, which is going to provide feedback on the various bills at Sacramento. In addition to that, the discussion at that meeting focused on what we believe is really wishful thinking on the part of many of these bills, that high-density housing would be built along transit and bus routes all throughout the Bay Area without much parking, and then everybody would get onto BART or Caltrain and go into the city or to Silicon Valley for their jobs. That's not going to happen, it's going to impact our highways, it's going to impact BART, which may not be capable of this increased ridership. And what many cities in the surrounding counties, including Contra Costa, are advocating are bringing jobs to our areas so that BART can be used in both directions during the day, so that there is a jobs-housing balance throughout the Bay Area. And this particular graphic is quite striking. It came from the CASA Compact. This slide happens to be one that the Tri-Valley Cities put together. The blue graph, the blue column is jobs, and the orange column is housing. And as you can see, the greatest job, number of jobs are concentrated in three counties, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. While Contra Costa does have an imbalance in jobs and housing, it is not as severe as the three counties. So the first thrust or series of recommendations that we will likely be making from the public managers is that there be a focus on providing housing where the jobs are before the transportation infrastructure is burdened by building housing in the outlying cities. So I expect to bring that to you at the next meeting or the meeting after that. I just wanted to provide you with an update to let you know that the public managers are working on this, and we will be reporting back. Just one final thing that I mentioned in the staff report is that I did reach out to Townsend Public Affairs, which is a lobbyist hired currently by the Tri-Valley Cities, by San Pablo and Walnut Creek, and they work hand-in-hand with those cities to influence legislation, to track legislation, to draft correspondence and letters for cities, and to really be nimble and stay on top of the legislation as it's moving through the committees. The proposal that was submitted to Lafayette was for $4,500 a month, for, which would cover all the tasks that I mentioned, and then some more. I have reached out to ask them whether they would consider a La Mirinda proposal. I have not heard back, and nor have we approached that concept formally with the other two cities. That ends my presentation, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for, yes, Vice Mayor Anderson?
So, it was, that's a very good report, and I think it's clear that it's going to be difficult to change the direction. The emphasis on housing is kind of baked into everything that people are talking about, whereas the jobs balance, the jobs-housing balance is just not even on the table. But that seems to be where we want to go. So that brings me back to Townsend. And I really would like to get that before us as an action item.
Okay.
We could take a look at that, because in talking to folks at the dinner after the Mayor's Conference, it became clear to me that it's going to be a matter of influence to get anything done with these bills, and Townsend clearly has the ability to get into Weiner's office, Chu's office, even Newsom's office. And that's what we were hearing from folks, they actually get calls back from the staff out of these different offices about their concerns on some of the bills. So I think if we're going to have any kind of effect at all, that's going to what we have to do. So I'd love to see that on the table so we could take a hard look at that.
Okay, thanks. Other questions first, or comments first, Dan?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Fantastic. Please, I totally agree with Mike on that one. Let's go as fast as we can with that group. I have a question. I keep seeing this job-rich housing project. Do we qualify in there or not?
It's a very good question, and I don't have the answer, and nor does the League at this time. It's not clearly defined in the bill, so we're trying to get answers to that question.
Okay.
I don't know at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Bliss?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, actually, just to pick up on that, I can discuss with the staff as well. There has been, the issue of what constitutes a jobs-rich community, as said, is right now not really well-defined in the current text of the bill. There has been some modeling that certain groups have done, even some mapping that allow you to look by census tract at what would be considered jobs-rich based on what is indicated in the bill. I could talk to staff about that, so that might be something that might be worth sharing with council, because it allows you to look in a very sort of spatially astute way at what those areas of the county and really the state would be. So that might be a useful tool for us to have access to as a council.
Sure.
So I'll share that around with the staff and with the rest of the council. Couple, just quick questions. There's a, first of all, thank you for the excellent report, and I agree with everything that's been said so far. There's a part of the, sharing the framework from the Tri-Valley Communities was really useful, the analysis and the framework they laid out. There was a part of, there was one part of it that I was really intrigued by, and just wanted to sort of get your thoughts on it. I'm just, I'll just read this part, it's on, I don't have the page number in front of me, but it's talking about the overall approach, and it says, "Recent history has demonstrated that simply opposing legislation does not work and in fact may be counterproductive, and that the Tri-Valley Cities will need to collaborate to influence legislative efforts, including proposing revisions to draft legislation to address new housing law as it is developed." And I think this goes to something Vice Mayor Anderson mentioned as well, which is our ability to actually stop SB 50 and other bills. SB 50, I think most people here know, passed out of committee, like nine, zero, and one, I think, last week.
Yes.
That's just one committee, obviously, but, so I'm just, and I know that the positions that the Tri-Valley Consortium took, some of them were supporting certain pieces of it, like the ADUs and things like that, others were opposed unless amended. So just any thoughts that you have on where the effort seems to be headed in terms of the balance between trying to stop some of these bills in their tracks and trying to at least improve them if they seem to be headed to the governor's desk or something?
I think the best time to stop a bill is before it's drafted and introduced, and so it's probably too late for this year. I don't think saying no to everything works, because we're not heard, our voice is not as effective, but to offer suggestions for amendment is a good thing. The Tri-Valley Cities have focused on what is important to them, things that are important to them. We understand at the county level that we will not have consensus on all the items, so we may distill maybe half a dozen items that we can all rally behind, but then each city can prepare its own resolution with its unique comments and concerns. I do believe there are calls for action in the CASA Compact that are worth supporting. They deal with funding, and I think we can rally behind that. ADUs, as another example, is something that we can do, we should get behind. I think we need to be very strategic and savvy about how we present our concerns to Sacramento, and having somebody like Townsend to guide us would be a good idea, because, and I'll say one more thing, because I don't think saying no to everything has worked for us in the past. I did speak to Senator Glazer's office, and as you are aware, Senator Glazer is behind our positions and is supportive, and has advised us that what, if we truly need to amend bills, what we should all be doing is reaching out to fellow council members and city managers and mayors from other cities where their legislators serve on key committees, and have them call their legislators, because us calling a different legislator is not as effective as having a mayor of Laxbury call somebody, the legislator from that district. So there's a lot of work ahead, and I think we need to, we need to come up with a plan of how we, when moving forward, we can be most effective quickly.
And I realize this would come back to us if we're given the option to pursue an engagement with Townsend, this would come, this detail would come back to us, I realize, but would Townsend's role be to actually potentially be crafting some of these amendments as part of that scope?
Yes. Part of their proposal does involve advising cities on the types of amendments that might get approved. It also includes drafting letters for cities with those suggested amendments.
Okay. And I should have asked this upfront, I apologize. Townsend, is that, there's a firm Townsend usher, is this the same, is this the John Townsend of that?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's called Townsend Public Affairs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Geringer?
So I did, first of all, also kudos to all of the work that you've been doing and to the committee that's been working, the mayor and others who've been working with you, and just in the last couple of days, all of the pieces around advocacy and helping to prompt us as to what we need to be doing. I really very much appreciate that and that you're moving in that direction. On the, two things, I am supportive of getting the proposal from Townsend, and I know that as we look at the proposal, I'm also very interested in knowing who their other clients are, because they have a lot of clients, and so they're working with communities that are near us that have similar interests, but I think we also want to make sure that where we are and what sort of say we have in how they might be also representing other cities that may think that lots of these elements are great, and so conflicts around that. Which also kind of brings me back to the League of California Cities. I think... I think that that's one of the struggles that the League has sometimes, is because of the diversity of the state and who they're representing, sometimes we feel like we're not being heard and they're not pushing enough. So I think it is sort of a whole balance of, yes, maybe Townsend can help us with a few things and get us in, but that league partnership and building those coalitions. So supportive of having Townsend come in, which also circles right back around to last year on AB 2923, while our goal was to, for lack of a better word, yeah, make it go away and never, you know, see the light of day again. A lot of work went into building coalitions from throughout the state, and I'm looking at Mayor Burks and others and our La Mirinda partners. So this work we're doing right now, while the bills are going through committees, the hope is some of them will die there, but we're gearing up. So we're not completely out of the water yet. And I mean, we're not completely behind the -- what's the word I'm looking -- behind the train and all of those things. We still have a lot of opportunities to partner there. And so excited that we want to move in this direction, want to be cautious on our use of which consultants we use. But I think we need all of the tools in our tool belt to make sure that we can fight these things without saying no and be strategic in our amendments. And so a big thank you to you, Nuru, for leading this effort. And it looks like you're having fun actually doing it and learning it. So thank you.
Okay, I've got -- are there any other comments or questions for staff? I've got several comments, but I'm going to hold them. I do want to thank our interim city manager's fantastic report, and she's done fantastic advocacy work, above and beyond, I think, what, you know, what she's been asked to do in this space, because these are critical issues for our town. You've heard me say it over and over again. This really, I mean, these next few years are going to, I believe, will define the character of our city for many, many years to come. But I'm going to hold my comments until we get to some public comment, because I saw a few cards, and I'd like to hear what folks have to say. Oh, one card, okay. Is this Lynn? Lynn? Lynn Haddane?
Okay, yeah.
So a year and a half of busyness.
And before you start, I would like to thank Ms. Haddane for her advocacy work. She's been really just going after this and the support of the city around these bills. So thank you very much as a prelude to your comments.
Thank you. 649 Los Palos Drive, Lynn Haddane. I wanted to toss a few comments into this. With regard to the jobs-housing balance, back in the days when we were fighting shaping our future here, which was another movement, a smart growth movement, had pretty much encompassed the county. Lafayette was found by, I think it was Dan Smith of Hans Corvay and Chuck DeLu and Smith, that Lafayette had, was the only city in Contra Costa County that had a perfect jobs-housing balance. And the meeting that took place over in the Contra Costa, the Contra Costa Council, deleted those words from the final draft. These people cheat. Don't believe them. Let me just put that in your head. Okay. Then, did any of you watch the housing hearing at all in Sacramento? Did you watch that?
Housing Committee.
Maybe you noticed that the proponents were allowed to speak and give their comments, and their name, and where they came from, who they represented. The opponents were not. They were instructed by the fellow running the meeting, and I presume that was probably the vice chair of the housing committee, instructed the opponents that they were only allowed to give their name, who they represented, or where they lived, and whether they were yes or no. Some of them were able to squeak in a sentence. That was all. That is not fair, and those rules need to be changed, and that should not be allowed to be gotten away with. I was told by another comment related, I was told by a BART board member that we should lean far more heavily on the League of California Cities to represent us and do a far stronger job of representing us. Let's see, what else? What else here? Oh, I think we should get ready to persuade Newsom not to sign those bills if they get past all their housing committees. I think 827, I believe, was stopped in the Finance and Transportation Commission, or Housing Committee, rather, up in Sacramento. So maybe we start working on them, too. It was interesting that, I think it's four, SB four, at least eliminates high-fire danger areas, which is something. That's going to be before the same committee at the same time as SB 50. And let's see here. Oh, in regard to defeating, I think, massive writing and massive calling. Can you hear me? Am I speaking loud enough? Okay. Massive writing, massive calling. Los Angeles would have stopped 2923. They, it was, it almost halted, because they were so vastly opposed to it, apparently. At least that's what I heard. But they were able to squeak through anyway, regardless. But it looked as if it was going to be stopped for a long time, apparently. And I think that is all. Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? All right, thank you very much. Does anybody else have comments?
Cities might try putting up huge signs, just like we used to do in campaigns, big ones that say no on SB 50. Drivers by see those things. They might think that's some massive opposition, and they might not be relected.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, any other public comment before we bring it back to the council? Okay, we'll bring it back. There is a recommendation for this, but I -- do we have comments? Any final comments? I know we kind of went through there. Look to my side. So I, you know, I have a few comments. I -- a lot of them have been echoed by my colleagues, but I saw the Townsend proposal. I do believe we need a lobbyist. The League is, it's a fantastic organization, but it's an education organization. They're, I don't believe they're capable of handling what's happening with the political landscape right now, and the stakes are too high for our city. So we shouldn't put all of our eggs in one external basket. So maybe when we get to that part of the agenda, we can agendize bringing the Townsend proposal back. So I do agree with that. I think for the cost, it's something we should consider. On SB 50, I mean, SB 50 is one of over 200 housing bills. And how many bills are actually have been submitted this year? Two thousand or so? Close to 2,000. I mean, the legislation in this state just stuns me. A lot of it is, a lot of it is good, and there'll be some good laws passed that'll do good things for people that, in this state. But on the housing side, you know, we're facing down the gun barrel here pretty sternly. And actually, one question I did have, and was to the city manager, I forgot to ask, have we heard anything from Southern California? Has the League talked about what any counties or coalitions or anybody from Southern California, maybe even pockets of, you know, urban areas of the valley or the north?
I have not heard of it. Doesn't mean that they haven't expressed.
You haven't heard anything?
Yeah, I haven't.
I would just echo the city manager's comments around building coalitions, and Senator Glazer is on a fantastic job in guiding us around that strategy. It is about reaching out to other, in my opinion, other city councils and other mayors in different jurisdictions, and targeting the ones that we know have assembly members and senators that wield influence in Sacramento and are going to be along the way in different committees, and then on the floor if it reaches the floor. And I think that's something we can perhaps all do individually, whether it's by picking up the phone, or, you know, have to hop on an airplane like I did, but, you know, making short drives, sending emails, you know, just doing as much as we can for our part. But I think having Townsend to really guide us through is, or another lobbyist or another group would be really, really good. I think we do, you know, at the end of the day, SB 50, in my opinion, the bill itself, I'm predicting will likely pass, hopefully with amendments that protect our city as much as it can. But I think we really do need, with the help of our lobbyists or just through strategy, maybe between Councilmember Bliss and I here on the legislative committee, bringing ideas to the council on potential amendments, and then really, really going after those amendments, maybe the top three or five that would really protect our city the most. And then having all five of us kind of go after those might be a strategy. This is all strategy, as our city manager talked about. But we've got to formulate it now. We've really got to get on it now. We're working on our, you know, first strategic goal is to maintain local control. That goal is going to be designed and delivered likely in the fall for the future. This is for now. So it's something that I think that the council, in my opinion, I think we should spend a fair amount of time on, and I would like to see on quite a few agendas in the future. So I think a lot of the notes that I finally was able to write on my new iPad here have been covered by my colleagues. I think one thing I would like to say on the CASA compact, I do agree with the city manager, that train has left the station. You know, I think it's good to educate the public that, you know, it's not worth the energy to fight the compact. It's worth looking at the bills that have incorporated elements that aren't good for our city, and go after those. And on the flip side, look for those elements that we think might be good for our city. I happen to believe that the element around ADUs is a positive thing. There's several of the elements, most of them, that I'm very, very worried about for Lafayette. But again, it comes down to strategy and what we'll do, and I think, you know, within the next couple of months, I think we'll formulate that. But with that, I think I really, really appreciate the city manager's energy around helping develop a county-wide framework. And I would like to make a motion that we authorize the interim city manager to work with the Contra Costa County Public Managers Association to develop this response to the compact and associated bills. I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a second.
Okay, is there any conversation or additional thoughts? Okay, then I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. So we will move on to item 11A, and this is on repealing LMC Chapter 5-5. And this is on our flavored tobacco products ban and licensing program, and I don't know if we have a staff report.
There is no staff report. We're asking for continuance to the first meeting in May.
Did you make the motion?
I move continuance to May 13th.
And I'll second that motion. And do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right, and we'll move on to 11B. And this is on 5G and the FCC's order on 5G, and I think we will have a staff report. I pile. That was approximately right. 200 housing. Okay, we're ready when you are. Thank you.
Yeah, we're ready. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, councilmembers, and members of the public. The item before you this evening is an introduction to an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lafayette amending Title VI, Part IV, Chapter 6-15 of the Lafayette Municipal Code related to wireless communication facilities, ordinance number 673. And we're also seeking that the council approve urgency ordinance associated with the wireless telecommunication facilities and design guidelines to allow 5G tower deployment in the public right-of-way. Before I get into the details of the ordinance and the design guidelines, I would like to invite Ms. Gail here from BBK, would, she would go over some of the history of the wireless telecommunication and what the FCC order entails the cities to do and the reason why we are here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Karish, and I'm a partner at Best, Best &amp; Krieger. I'm actually based in the Los Angeles office. And I just do telecommunications work for local governments. A lot of my time these days is being occupied by this topic. So this is something that's happening on a national level, this next round of deployments, and a lot of efforts to preempt local authority over traditional sort of land use decision-making in this area. So I, Pyle is going to be my manager there of the PowerPoint, and I'm just going to, I'm going to go through and try to do in about 10 minutes or so, cover a very complicated topic in terms of the regulatory framework, but hopefully just give you enough information on what's happening and what federal and state laws are out there to give you the context for the proposal for the ordinance amendments. So as I mentioned, the next, this is the, we talk about 5G or small cells, you hear a lot. This is really just talking about new types of wireless deployments that typically are smaller facilities than those big towers you used to seeing when you're driving down the highway. And they are deployed closer to users, so the, one of the target areas for these deployments by the wireless industry is in the public rights of way, where other utilities typically are. So the, in this presentation, I'll go through some of the different federal and state laws that impact local authority. The starting premise, of course, for any city is that you have control over development within your city. You have police powers and you can control development. But of course, as you see in the prior topic on housing, very much like housing in telecommunications there has been through the years, preemption both at the federal and at the state level. First, I'll go a little bit through the technology so that we're all kind of on the same page when we're talking about these issues. This is just a schematic of a typical wireless facility. You have, of course, antennas that are, you know, transmitting the radio frequencies. There's equipment on the facility that is kind of translating those wireless signals into something that can run over a wire. There's connecting cables. There's a support structure that's holding up everything. There's a power source, a battery or a meter and a power line coming in. And then there is backhaul, what we call backhaul, and that is that the most expensive part of a wireless network is the wireless part. They auction off these licenses, and so they want to get the signals onto fiber or something as quickly as they can so they maximize the use of the wireless and they minimize, you know, the amount of licensed frequencies they need to purchase. So that's your typical facility. If you go to the next slide, you, we're really just talking about exactly the same, all those components, but in a smaller version. Not necessarily the equipment always being smaller, but the coverage area being smaller. So that's what they're talking about when they say small cells. It just means it's covering a smaller area. And those come in two forms, basically. There's sort of like a standalone facility, and there's also, what you hear sometimes, distributed antenna systems. And that's where there are antennas on multiple, if you go on the next slide, I think we have, oh, nope. We'll come to one that will show you. Distributed antenna system, basically, you have multiple antennas that are all connected by fiber and are sort of operating together to cover an area. The, a common A common location, as I mentioned, for small cells is in the public rights of way on utility poles and streetlights and things like that. And I'll have some examples as we go through. The wireless carriers are deploying these facilities to meet current demand. So they are putting in facilities that are 4G facilities to increase capacity in high-demand areas, to fill in gaps, things like that. But they also are looking to do this for this, what we call 5G, which is the next generation of wireless deployments. And if we turn to the next slide, so what is 5G? So 5G is like a marketing term. It's not particular spectrum, right? It's the next generation of wireless technology. So this is just showing you the full kind of range of electromagnetic spectrum. Wireless is a very small part of it. There are a lot of other uses. And of course, there are, I think, like X-rays way off the charts over ionizing. And we're talking about non-ionizing electromagnetic spectrum. Next slide. And 5G is, as you can see here, is really going to, in this graphic, it's going to increase the capacity. So this is spectrum I like to describe as a really big pipe. So if you think of dial-up and then moving to broadband, this is like a big leap forward in terms of capacity. But the type of frequencies that they're planning to use, that they call millimeter wave, these don't have the same kind of range. So that's why they'll have to be close to the users, close to the handsets. And again, that's why there's a big focus on putting them in the public right-of-way. So here's some examples. On the left, that's when, I actually took that picture in Oakland, of a small cell that kind of looks like a macro site. I don't know if you can see very well, but there's actually some equipment, you know, little fenced-off area on the ground. And those are pretty big antennas. The one on the, in the middle, that diagram shows you what I was talking about when there is a distributed antenna system. The antennas are all connected and most of the equipment is off the public right-of-way. On the right is an example of a wireless facility on a streetlight. And you can see down where the sign is, they're quite closer to the ground. That's where they put some equipment. So it's sort of hidden behind a sign. On utility poles, there's sort of three flavors. It can be on the pole top. So usually it has to have an extra extension so it has a safety separation from the power lines. It can be what they call mid-pole. That's in the communication space below the electricity power lines. Or it can be actually mid-strand. So an antenna attached to fiber that is hanging on a pole. And one, because of there is local regulation of design, there's been, and there still is, a lot of evolution in terms of stealth design. So you see some examples. The one on the left is actually a giant pole in Los Angeles. In the middle is in Palo's Verdes Estates. They have an antenna that's attached to a street sign. And then there's some examples of more lamp posts. And the one on the right actually is in Los Angeles. It's one that has some 5G. There's almost no 5G equipment being deployed today because it's still being in the test phase. But they are testing in Los Angeles. And the 5G equipment on that pole are those little antennas that are below the pole top one. And that's a 4G and 5G installation. Okay, so what's driving deployment in a word is cell phones and all of the, you know, it's all sort of started with the iPhone. And so all of these kind of connected devices, as we go forward with other frequencies and more deployment, there will be other machine-to-machine kind of connected internet of things, all of these sort of smart cities, all these things you hear, that all depends on a lot of wireless connectivity. So it's not just, we hear a lot about wireless carriers, but it's not only wireless carriers who are deploying wireless facilities. We have telephone companies that are like the carriers' carriers that are working for wireless facilities. They're putting in these systems. Cable operators are putting in Wi-Fi hotspots and also getting in the small cell market. Gas, electric water utilities are putting in smart meters and data collection units that are in the public right-of-way. And municipal, there are municipal uses for wireless as well, traffic and parking systems, public safety systems. There's a lot of demand. Okay, so now going through some of the federal law first. So there are several provisions of federal law that have mostly recognized local authority over planning, but preempted some important aspects. And one I'll talk about in a moment. But most of these laws that you see here were all passed in the 70s and the 90s. So it's only 47 USC 1455 that you see in the middle there. That was adopted in 2012. And that requires certain types of changes to existing wireless facilities. If they meet certain criteria, have to be approved by local governments. But most of the laws that are on the books here in this area have been around since the 90s, since the beginning of wireless deployments. So this is the most important one for planners, and they certainly know about this. It's put some limitations on local authority. You have to act within a reasonable time. You can't prohibit personal wireless services, that's cellphone services. If you're denying an application, it has to be in writing, supported by substantial evidence. You cannot consider RF emissions in your decision-making because that is the purview of the FCC. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And you can't discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. And that means you couldn't say, we don't want small cells. We only want macro sites or vice versa. And it also allows for an expedited appeal process to the court. The FCC, since 2009, has issued several really important orders. And the small cell order, which we're going to talk about in a moment, is probably the most important, the most recent one from last year that is just going into effect, has partly gone into effect already and the remainder on April 15th and is the reason for the urgency ordinance in effect. But in 2009 is when they first started, the FCC first adopted some shot clocks to hurry the procedures along at the local level. In 2014, they established a third shot clock for those types of facility changes that local governments are required to approve under that 2012 statute that I mentioned. And then the two actions that they took in 2018, one is that they banned moratoria on processing applications. So you're not allowed, as a local government, to just say, we want to take a pause and think about this and come up with some rules. The FCC said that is an effective prohibition of service. You can't do that. The second thing they did in 2018 is they adopted what I'm calling the small cell order. And that was coming up with two more new shot clocks, even shorter ones, specifically for small wireless facilities, as they define it. And they also put some other limits on the fees that could be charged. They have to be cost-based, which mostly they are in California. But that also extended to the fees for use of city properties, such as streetlights, have to be cost-based. And they put some limits on the aesthetic rules that could be applied in evaluating these applications. And the most important rule there really is that the standards that you set have to be objective and they have to be published in advance. So those are the rules that are coming in on April 15th. The aesthetic portions, the shot clocks and fees have already gone into effect. And so the urgency here really relates to the need to have objective standards in place and a process that can actually be completed in a timely way under these shorter shot clocks. I've talked about the moratoria ban. That doesn't allow you to push the pause button. So we can go to the next slide. And I've run through some of the things in the small cell order. The other thing that I mentioned on the small cell order is that it only, it not only gives you a very short timeline, it also says that all the authorizations that might be required from the local government, including any appeals, all of that has to happen within that timeline. So it's really quite an onerous process in terms of a very short timeline for review. There is litigation challenging the, both those FCC orders, the moratorium order and the small cell order. And our firm, I'm part of the team that is representing a large coalition who is appealing these orders. There are other coalitions as well. All the local government parties are working very cooperatively in these appeals. They've all been consolidated in the Ninth Circuit, which we think is very positive in terms of the circuits that we looked at and wanted to be in the Ninth Circuit. And there's a case management conference coming up in April 18th where we're trying, we're going to sort out, since this is large and complex litigation, sort out the briefing schedule. And so we should know by the beginning of May, hopefully, when, how long this appeal process will take. I said I would talk a little bit about RF emission standards, exposures. I have a few slides. This is not my area of expertise entirely because I am not an engineer. But the FCC is the sole authority in the US that can establish these standards. And so, as I mentioned earlier, local governments and even state-level governments are completely preempted from acting in this area. What you can do is require that any applicant demonstrate that they are meeting the FCC standards. So, next slide. The standards that have been developed by the FCC, there are two categories. One is an occupational standard for persons who are actually working in the industry and have to be near wireless facilities. And the other is for the general population that they call sort of uncontrolled exposure. So you should be able to safely walk up and down your streets and know that you are not being exposed to RF emissions beyond the standards set by the FCC. This is just a sample slide showing that different types of, sometimes people are very focused on wireless facilities because you can see an antenna or a tower. But we're actually exposed to a lot of electromagnetic emissions from other sources as well. This just has a few examples from a chart from the Electric Power Research Institute that was very involved in the deployment of smart meters, which also raised some public concerns about RF emissions. And so this just shows that the levels vary quite significantly depending on what you're using and how far away you are from a particular source. So at the state level, I'm going to turn briefly to the state level. One of the key provisions at the state level is a statute that was enacted at the dawn of telephone companies deploying wireline facilities or telephone lines. And that is Public Utility Code, Section 7901. That grants a franchise to telephone companies to use the public rights of way to place their facilities. And it's not an unfettered right. It has some limitations. And the limitation, to use the language, is that it cannot incommode the public use. And that has been interpreted and upheld in a very recent decision that actually just was issued less than a week ago. That includes, that evaluation of whether a facility incommodes the public use includes the ability to consider the aesthetics of the installation. So that is important here when we're talking about wireless facilities because that telephone franchise grant has been interpreted to include both telephone lines, traditional telephone lines, and wireless facilities. So this is a positive story at the state level, a recognition of local discretionary authority to consider aesthetics. But we also have to live with the FCC orders that have put other limits on them. There are some other provisions of state law that are relevant to wireless facility deployments. One that was adopted, I think in 2015, that AB 57, it actually gives a deemed approved remedy if you miss, if a local government misses an FCC shot clock. But it only applies to the ones adopted in 2009. It doesn't apply to these current small cell shot clocks that were just adopted in 2018. There are some other provisions that have placed some other limits on your authority. And then I just have a note at the bottom. It says 2018, but it should be 2017. There was an attempt, as you probably were aware, to have a small cell bill passed in California, and it was actually vetoed by the governor. We were very involved, me personally, very involved in that. We have, our firm has a lobbyist as part of our group of government relations lobbyists in Sacramento. And we had a small coalition that worked with the League and with some others on opposing that legislation and managed to get a veto out of the governor, which in hindsight was one of the big reasons why I think the FCC acted after with this small cell order because California is a very attractive market for the wireless providers. But here we are. So at the state level, not much of a role. It's mostly federal and local because federal preemption, federal regulation of spectrum, local regulation of aesthetics. But the California Public Utilities Commission does play a really important role in regulating one of the most important structures that is available for small cells in the public right-of-way, and that is utility poles. They have extensive regulation of utility infrastructure, including the safety of utility poles. There is another organization called the Northern California Joint Pole Association. There's North version and a Southern California version. That's an association of pole owners. So a utility pole can be owned by multiple parties. And that's the organization of utilities that sort of manages the ownership of poles. So if a wireless provider wants to use space on a pole, they'll have to comply with CPUC orders for what's a safe installation. They will also have to either, if they're a member of one of these associations, they could buy space on the pole through the association. Or if they are a renter, you can buy or you can rent space on a pole. If they are a renter, they would enter into a pole attachment agreement and rent space on the utility pole. And when we're talking about city-owned streetlights, we employ the same sort of concept of if you want to rent space on the streetlight, then we have an agreement that is like a license agreement, much like a pole attachment agreement. So this is just a list of some of the key orders of the CPUC that deal with the safety of installations of telephone and electric lines. And GO 159A is an order, a general order that defers to local zoning facilities. And it was adopted when wireless facilities were only really being deployed on a macro kind of level, big towers. But the court, in this recent decision from just last week, actually mentioned General Order 159A as further support for why local governments have not been preempted by anyone in terms of regulating aesthetics. So that's the end of my presentation. In summary, the next generation of wireless facilities we're expecting will be largely in the public rights of way. There is a right to use the public right-of-way, but the local governments have aesthetic control. Federal law and FCC orders have placed a lot of limitations on your authority in terms of the time for action and some limits on the aesthetic regulations. of the time for action and some limits on the aesthetic regulations that you can develop. The CPUC is mainly responsible for the safety of the utility poles. They're not really regulating otherwise in this area. And local governments regulate placement and aesthetics. You have to comply with shot clocks, and the shot clocks just keep getting shorter. So that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Gail. I just wanted to add a little bit and just go over the structure of the guidelines as we have put together. Basically, as Gail mentioned, we have till April 15 to come up with design standards that are objective, that would allow these facilities in the public right-of-way. So the way the guidelines are structured, we are taking a very kind of restrictive view vis-à-vis the deployment of these facilities in the public right-of-way for the downtown, specifically the downtown specific plan area where we are saying that these facilities will only be allowed on utility poles and on traffic poles and not on any decorative light standards or other light standards. Furthermore, we also restrict replacement of light standards for light standards with facilities in the downtown area. In other places in the city, we do allow the facilities to exist on light standards, on traffic signal lights, as well as on utility poles. And the guidelines are structured with kind of overview of standards that apply to all facilities everywhere. And then particularly goes down into detail where there's existing facility and people want to attach wireless telecommunications facilities to that. Specific standards for poles, utility poles, specific standards for replacement poles and new poles. So there are kind of the four categories. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you both very much, and we appreciate you coming to visit us from Southern California to provide such a comprehensive orientation, which I found very interesting. So thank you. I'm sure we will have some questions for you, both, and a great staff report as well, Pyle. So I'll look to my colleagues for questions of the, for the staff. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. It answered a few questions like, what is the strand-mounted facility? I had no idea, so now I know. We're not going to allow that. I guess I want to kind of deal with the, the real question that I think a lot of people are concerned about is what real authority we have. And I just want to kind of state it again. What I hear you saying is we don't really have any authority over the placement of these items other than their appearance. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I would say you also can be concerned about safety issues like ADA compliance, things like that, that are your traditional sort of right-of-way concerns, right? Visibility, things like that.
We cannot be concerned about the RF, the frequencies that they're generating and potential health hazards that come about because of those frequencies.
That's correct. That, that's totally only the purview of the federal government.
That's off limits for us.
That's off.
Can't consider that in our, considering where these are going to be located.
Right. You can, you can consider, you can ask, and you can ask a applicant to demonstrate that their facility will comply. They typically do a report on where the, the facility is going to be located, that it will meet those standards. But that's, that you can't deny applications or otherwise regulate based on a concern about RF emissions.
Okay. And I did read that there is litigation going on. You mentioned it also. If we go ahead with what we have as the ordinance, the urgency ordinance and urgency resolution we have tonight, does that put us in a position where we can't pivot if the litigation is successful and we gain more authority? Do you follow my?
Yeah. The way you would address that would be the same way you're addressing the order now. So you're adopting changes or you're being, what's being proposed for you to do is to adopt changes to your ordinance to bring you into compliance with what the order requires. You could, if the order is overturned, usually it would be remanded, so you might get a new FCC order out or something like that, then you could make further amendments to address different changes in your authority.
Okay. So the urgency ordinance and resolution doesn't commit us to anything that we can't change.
Right.
Should the litigation be successful in some form?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I was kind of just wondering, how far apart are these going to be located?
Right.
I mean, you said they don't transmit very, how far, is it a block or every half a block or what?
So there, it, so I'm going to give you kind of an unsatisfactory answer.
I'll take it.
They, it depends a little bit on what is being deployed, right? So there are different types of facilities going in. The 4G facilities, the small cells that are just filling in capacity, they usually only cover maybe 500 feet.
500 feet.
Yeah. Or 1,000 feet, depending on, you know, how tall they are and what the foliage is around and, you know, what sort of the target. There, we don't know with the 5G facilities or the millimeter wave facilities where we'll end up, but the, sometimes carriers say as, as little as like every 200 feet you might have a facility. Yeah.
That's bizarre.
I, I'd like to add to that. As part of the application process, we will be requiring providers to provide a map showing that they really need the capacity and they really need that facility at that particular location. So it is not kind of a given. They have to demonstrate the need. However, once they have done that, we cannot deny the application.
I understand, but what I'm understanding from what you're saying is that a network of 5G may have to be 200 to 400 feet on center.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you think about what their, some of the uses are for this network or what are the, some of the capabilities, it, when you talk, when you hear people talking about connected cars, automated vehicles, imagine the, how robust a network you need to be able to actually operate something like that, that is in real time, not having a bunch of cars crash into each other kind of thing, right? So the, the, the level of the quality of the networks, it just won't be acceptable. Like if you're on your phone and you drop a call and you just call back.
Right.
You can't really have that with traffic.
Can't do that in the car, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's what I had now. I have some questions about the resolution and the ordinance when we get to that, but that helps me understand where we are. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Come from Candell.
Hi, I'm Susan Candell. I have a lot of questions. Sorry. Were you involved in, so these other cities that have adopted ordinances that have basically said no, were not, they may not be part of the actions against the FCC, but they've written their own ordinances? And I quite, I sent this off to Mala earlier today. Did you help write those ordinances as part of the BBK effort?
So I, you'd have, I've worked with a lot of cities.
Okay, section two. All right. So the city council hereby finds that adoption of this ordinance will enact only minor changes in land use regulations, and it can be seen with certainty that its adoption will not have a significant effect on the environment because it will not allow for the development of any new or expanded wireless telecommunication facilities anywhere other than where they were previously allowed under existing federal, state, and local regulations. So they basically said no. That's very different than the ordinance that we're looking at right now. And I was just wondering if you were involved with that or if your firm was involved with that.
Okay. So I, I would have to know the city, but I.
Mill Valley, Fairfax.
So Mill Valley, I do not do work for, for Mill Valley. I, I do, we, our firm does represent Fairfax, I think. In that case, I have actually been working with the town on, I've been to several planning commission meetings and city council meetings on an update to their, the sort of a replacement for their urgency ordinance. That was adopted before I was asked to participate in any of the drafting or anything like that. But what, what you read there sounded like a sequa determination.
It was part, yes. It's part, it's before, and then it goes into the sequa. Yes.
Yeah. That sounds like a.
But it's very different than our ordinance.
Well, that's just a sequa determination. That, that doesn't, so what it says may not necessar, I mean, it's hard to, to speak sort of in a vacuum, but that, that's just a statement of what their belief is of what they're doing with this ordinance. And so whether it fully does that, I'd have to evaluate the entire ordinance and say, because they didn't, none of those cities, as much as I'm familiar with what's been adopted, and this is mostly in Marin County, cities that have been doing this, they didn't, you know, just simply issue a ban. So they did adopt pretty extensive ordinances that, that on their face have, they're, they're not outright banning wireless facilities in the entire city.
No, but they went, they went in that direction, right? Much more than, than what we are going to do. That's how I was reading. But it sounds like you're not the right person to be asking for anyway. It'd be nice to find that.
Well, I can't, I haven't done that evaluation, so I don't want to.
No, I totally, it's fine. I totally get that. I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. So I'll go on to another one. So are you also representing the cities that are bringing the action against the FCC?
Yeah. Our firm represents the largest coalition of cities that have fought, or cities and counties and national associations that have filed an appeal of the, both those orders, the moratorium order and the small cell order. Yeah.
And in those, did you help draft any of the ordinances that their city adopted at this state in order to, like, like we're adopting tonight? That were.
Oh, of coalition members?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I've been working with a lot of cities on updates to their wireless ordinances. So what they're, what most cities are doing are pretty similar to, you know, there's, there's degrees in there, but they're pretty similar to what is being proposed here, and that is taking steps to, to make sure that they can at least process applications in a timely way and adopt some standards for aesthetics that are objective and published in advance and, you know, sort of trying to meet the spirit of what the FCC is requiring. But that doesn't, doesn't prevent them from participating in the appeal of the order. It's just the order is in effect. The shot clocks went into effect in January. The aesthetic, the standards, the kind of limitations on aesthetic standards go into effect on April 15th. That is the law. And we asked twice, we asked the FCC and we asked the Tenth Circuit before everything got moved to the Ninth Circuit. We asked for a stay of the effectiveness of the order, and we were denied both times. And so the reality on the ground is to choose, you know, sort of choose your battles. And so that's how most cities have, that I've been working with have come out on it.
Thank you. And I do appreciate all the work you've done, and same with Pyle, too. So I, I did go to the City of Arinda's meeting on this, and they had somebody come in. And the way that I, I was hearing it is that each carrier, and of which we have four, I guess major carriers, and possibly five, each of them will be setting up their own 5G network. And so there'll be multiple carriers maybe on the same pole. Their estimate for Arinda, which is a smaller city than ours, was 820 of these cells. And so they're just literally everywhere. And so I imagine ours will be 1,000 plus, right? That would be a swag or more, right? And so they're, they're basically everywhere. Do you agree with that kind of number? Is that how this is?
Any number right now is kind of speculation. There is, there are four major carriers. Two of them are trying to merge, so that would be three. They are allowed under FCC rules and federal law to build their own networks. They don't have to share networks. So that, that is true. And they are very competitive. So we do expect to see at least three networks out there. But how many and how fast will, I think the business models for actually, you know, monetizing this deployment is going to take a while to sort out. And so what we actually see in deployment at the end of the day and where is, is not clear today.
I heard that private roads are exempt. That was what was said in Arinda. So any private road in Lafayette would be exempt. How do you read that?
So, private roads are not subject to Public Utility Code Section 7901. So it's not a public right-of-way. But they are not exempt from the FCC order. The FCC order applies to, the FCC order apply on, in terms of the city's regulatory capacity, it applies, it doesn't distinguish the location. We just know, and we dealt within the urgency ordinance, public rights-of-way because we know that is where most of these wireless facilities are going to be deployed. Private streets, whether a utility could, could use the private street will depend a little bit on like what kind of an easement they have and things like that that may, may take them out of being available for use, but not because the FCC order wouldn't apply, more of a property rights issue.
So Pyle, how do you guys see how that playing out in Lafayette, like of our private streets? Do they all have?
I think we were just saying that if the owners of the private street want to permit it, or if there's already an existing utility easement, then they would be able to go in.
But it would be easier for them to deny it? That's the flip side, right? If they don't want it, you'd think that that would be true for Lafayette.
Correct. If there's no easement and they don't want it, correct.
Okay. All right, good.
What I was mentioning was in terms of the, the city's regulatory authority, like permitting sort of authority, the FCC order didn't distinguish. And the, the, that's a difference between, in some states where you saw small cell bills pass, they only applied in the public right-of-way in some instances. So it was a little bit more narrow.
So you listed a whole bunch of other entities that were deploying these. What control do we as cities or, what control do we have over those? Or those totally outside of Lafayette's control?
So some of it depends on the, so the, if we look at the, the list here, the wireless carriers and the telephone companies, that's mostly what we're talking about in terms of deploying here because they're the ones that are supporting the wireless, wireless, you know, cellphone networks. The cable operators, they are, in California, would be subject to the same sort of limitations right now as, as the wireless and the telephone companies. So they would, their, and their facilities would be captured by this if they're deploying facilities for the, for that purpose. The gas, electric, water utilities, I know the gas and electric have, they have a different type of franchise under state law. They've, and they have already deployed their advanced metering infrastructure. It doesn't have to be as, as frequent because they cover broad areas just to read the meter periodically. And those, there is a CPUC general order that requires that they work with local governments, but it's not really entirely clear if the local government could just absolutely say no to them or not. It's a, it's more of a vague area of the law. But they're not into this, they're, they've done sort of the deployments they want. It's more limited to the advanced metering infrastructure. They haven't, they haven't done, gotten into the wireless market. So they're not really supporting the wireless providers. And then the municipal uses, you wouldn't, there would be no limitation. It would be your, using your own rights-of-way and your own facilities by and large.
So would this ordinance, if they did choose to some, for some reason, go into this, our ordinance would still cover them too?
Right.
Okay. That's, I just kind of want to make sure that we were covered there. So, and then come down to my last question, which is the one that I really have a hard time with, is the safety standards. And, and why I agree with you, but I don't agree with you is that in terms of being able to touch the FCC. in terms of being able to touch the FCC safety, is that in their tables, they have empty cells in their tables for the maximum magnetic field and electric field for 5G. They are not populated. And that, and we refer to them in this ordinance, and I was wondering what, I know you said, I was asking. So basically, they...
Right.
We refer to 47 CFR Section 1.1307B, and that one goes to the FCC adopted limits in 1.1310. And there's that table where 4G, it's, it's empty. And I, I don't know how our city, it's, I don't know if you guys, there's, there's these tables that they, and there's empty, empty tables where the 5G maximum exposure for electric field strength and magnetic field strength. My problem is that here, we do want to enforce it. We want them to measure, right? You know, we want to have them going out there, and especially if they've got multiple carriers, they've got the three different carriers, they're all aiming, these 5Gs aim and they pulse. We want them to test that, but the FCC itself has not adopted the actual limits for these. Has any, are any of these FCC actions addressing this? Because I see that as a huge gap.
So as I understand it, so what you're referring to is a table that has, I think it has three columns with figures, and, and two of the columns don't have a number, but there is a number in one of the columns.
No.
For 5G.
Okay, so the electric field and magnetic field strengths for the frequencies of 300 megahertz up to 100,000 megahertz, which covers the 5G range, those are empty. They do have a power density and average time.
Right. So there are numbers there, and, and the FCC, there are, they're not in every column, but they're in the columns that the FCC determined were relevant for that level of spectrum. And there's a, and we can share this with you later. We wanted to get this to you sooner, I think, but there is a, a local, what's called a Local Government Official's Guide to Transmitting Antenna RF Emissions Safety Rules that explains a lot of these things.
Right.
And one of the, with respect to the electric field strength, magnetic field strength, and power density, in the guide, it states that the electric field strength and magnetic field strength are used to measure near-field exposure and at frequencies below 300 megahertz. So the, those ones are empty because they're not relevant for the, the type of megahertz exposure being, being referred to.
But these are 5G, like, they don't, they don't measure them at 5G.
What I'm saying is, I'm reading what the FCC guidance says on that. I'm, I'm not an RF engineer, so I, I can only explain it so well. But what the, what the FCC is saying in their, in their report when they developed those standards, is that those, for over 300 megahertz, those two columns, they don't have numbers because those numbers are not relevant for the, that type of megahertz spectrum.
They are. I am an engineer.
Well, I am telling you what the FCC says. I'm not, and maybe I'm not phrasing it properly to say not relevant, but what, maybe I should just read the paragraph that I'm referring to that might be more helpful. So it says, "Electric field strength and magnetic field strength are used to measure near-field exposure at frequencies below 300 megahertz. These are typically the more relevant measures of exposure, and power density values are given primarily for reference purposes. However, evaluation of far-field equivalent power density exposure may still be appropriate for evaluating exposure in some such cases. For frequencies above 300 megahertz," and that's what we're talking about with 5G, "above 300 megahertz, only one field component need to be evaluated, and exposure is usually more easily characterized in terms of power density. Transmitters and antennas that operate at 300 megahertz or lower include radio broadcast stations, some television broadcast stations, and certain personal wireless services facilities. Most personal wireless service facilities, including all cellular and PCS, as well as some television broadcast stations, operate at frequencies above 300 megahertz." So what their report is, that those numbers are not the ones that, that are, they use for measuring when it's above 300 megahertz.
I understand that, but it...
I can, I can't, all I can do is tell you what it, it says, and, and that the FCC's position is that they do have standards that cover 5G. And I know that there is, the FCC started in 2013 a proceeding to update its standards with respect to exposures from handsets, and it has not completed that. It has not completed that proceeding, and that is one of the issues that we have raised in, in the appeal, because we understand, I, I go to a lot of city council meetings and planning commission meetings. I understand that there is a lot of public concern. I'm not the rulemaker, I'm just the delivery of, you know, the one who has to deliver the message that the FCC takes the position, they have covered this area. And, and so that is where, where, you know, they don't see a space for local governments setting their own regulation.
Right, I, I understand what you're, you're saying, and I totally appreciate you reading, but you understand that the typically, and the wording in there is so not relevant to somebody going out there and testing. You know, it doesn't, it's so vague, and it doesn't really describe the situation at all. And the fact that they haven't even done the wireless ones, which are even a lower, you know, range. It just, the FCC has not captured this yet. And, and the safety settings have not really been done. Otherwise, they'd be quoting them. And I, and I just was hoping that you were reading something different that I've been reading, but you haven't.
No.
It's all the same stuff.
It's very frustrating. I cannot tell you how frustrating it is at a local level, because it's city councils and planning commissions that hear from the public, hear the concern, and they're powerless to, to adopt the rules. So, so they just keep trying to get that message through to the FCC. And there is some effort in Congress as well, I think, to get this message, because, to get this message to the FCC, to get them to do something, to update their studies, because it is obviously an issue of public concern. There's no doubt about it.
I know Planning Commission, you said that there was, they were gonna try to do some measure, they had some provisions they were talking about, but didn't get into your report. Did the Planning Commission come up with anything different than what was, that you put in? Okay, so it was, pursuant to Planning Commission's recommendations, except the last bullet point, because per federal law, local jurisdictions are not allowed to require installation of meters on the wireless facilities that would allow constant monitoring of the radio frequency being emitted by the equipment. At the time of preparation of the staff report, draft minutes of the Planning Commission meeting were not available. What did they say?
So during the Planning Commission review, they had mentioned that one of the commissioners had seen a poll where there was a meter that was showing exactly what the emissions were
Right.
at any given time, and that she was wanting for us to include in our standards that such meters be installed. And I conferred with the expert and was told that actually, under the FCC order, we're not allowed to do that.
We're not allowed to measure?
We're not allowed to constantly monitor.
We're not allowed to constantly monitor?
Mm-hmm, so we couldn't require them to have a meter that is constantly showing what the frequency it's emitting.
So our city couldn't even put in a constant measuring device?
The city could. It, it's, the city could do your own measures. What, there, there is a case, there's one California case, and I'm trying to remember the name of the city. Is it Glendale, I think? No, the city of Calabasas, where, where they attempted, they adopted an ordinance. This has nothing to do with small cells, but a few years ago, adopted an ordinance and had a very, had all kinds of things that had, that had to be done by a carrier to demonstrate constant compliance with RF emissions standards. And they were sued, and they were, the carrier was successful in the lawsuit in saying that they had, that the FCC setting the standards preamps local governments from establishing like their own compliance program. So you, you can't force a carrier to put on meters that are measuring things and all things like that. You can, as a matter of your own code enforcement and, and, you know, make, ensuring that the conditions of approval are met. You could, you could hire inspectors to go out and do these sorts of things. You just can't put that onus of, on the carrier's cells.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, I was just gonna ask.
Sorry, I'm done, sorry.
Oh, good questions.
Oh yeah, I waited until I heard her say, I'm done. So as a follow-on, I guess, so, so hearing that we can't require that the carrier to pay for the monitoring, we do have within our ordinances that they will have to, or actually, the FCC says they have to meet the FCC standards. And then we have in our ordinances now, and in the one that, that we're looking at, reporting back and finding ways to test. And I know there's a question whether every three years is enough or every... But if we independently had the cell sites tested, and we determined that they were not within the FCC standards, what's our recourse? What's our enforcement possibilities there?
Well, I, one thing, and this is, this does happen from time to time. There was, usually what you would do is report to the Federal Communications Commission to investigate whether there's compliance. And that actually happened a few years ago with rooftop facilities that Verizon Wireless had. There were a number of inspections that were found that they hadn't put up proper kind of, when, when you're dealing with a rooftop facility, there are certain areas of the rooftop that you shouldn't have people going, walking through and things like that, and they hadn't adequately marked them and things like that. And they were actually fined by the FCC, and they had to enter into a compliance order. So it would be that kind of reporting. Obviously, you would go to the carrier right away and ask them to, you know, confirm the results, things like that. And if they were in violation of the, their conditions of approval, then it would be the kind of thing that might be subject to a revocation hearing or something like that.
Okay, and so can we, let's see, to the, so we can't make the standards hard or more stringent, because they're the FCC standards, and those are the ones the carriers have to comply with. Can we have them, have shorter timeframes on monitoring and reporting back? Or are those set as well?
Those, oh, did you, those are set in your ordinance now at three years, I think, every three years. And I remember I was actually, the last time I was here, was a Planning Commission hearing when, I think when they were adopting those provisions. And I know that was something at the time that the carriers complained about, that said that that was unlawful. I don't know if we've had, if you've had any enforcement on that, or if they've been complying since...
They have been complying, to my knowledge, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
You were, you were thinking of making that less than three years, like...
Yeah, like if we wanted to have tests every...
Annually?
Yeah, I'm just...
So I think what...
I remember reading the part about how they pushed back on that before. I was just trying to get us to a place of comfort with that, those standards in the first year, when we, they're installing them, we know they meet them. Then in three years, if three years has been working, but we don't really know, you know, the 5G yet...
Three years have been working, we can certainly do it, do a more restrictive standard. And if we get pushback from the providers or the people who deploy, deploy this, we might have to come back and revisit that. So that is certainly something that we can do today, but we might get challenged. And that goes true with the development standards as well.
Okay, that was it for now.
Councilor Bliss?
Yeah, I had two questions. First of all, thanks, thank you both for the excellent presentations and for helping us address these questions. Like my colleagues on council, you know, I'm troubled by the steps the FCC has taken the last year or so, and the extent to which this really limits, in some pretty severe ways, local control. And so like others up here, I'm kind of trying with, with your guidance to think about what are the levers, limited though they might be, that we might have available to us in light of some of these changes. So I have two questions that I guess relate to that. One actually ties back to the question from Councilmember Candell about when these sort of deployments occur on private land, like private streets outside of the public right-of-way, and what, what options we have there. I know in the development standards, it makes reference to, for things outside of the public right-of-way, preferred and discouraged sites. What, in this context, for small cell deployments, what does that mean? I mean, if we stipulate something as being a discouraged site, I know it wouldn't apply to public right-of-way. Does that then, when we actually have a project before us, under this ordinance that we have to review, does that then carry the force of allowing us to make findings that because it runs counter to our stipulated preferred sites, we can basically deny a request to put something, a deployment, on private land or on a private street in this case?
Correct, so the zoning administrator would have the authority to make those determinations with respect to the small cell sites. And there is a very quick turnaround for an appeal process within the shot clock period. So, but you're absolutely correct. There would be the capacity to say, this is not our preferred site. You have not demonstrated that you can only deploy this facility here and not somewhere else to get the coverage and the capacity that you need. And for these reasons, we are denying the application. So we certainly have that authority.
Okay. My other question goes to the scope of our review in terms of aesthetics of the small cell deployments, which I understand something that is within our purview. And I know that the thinking, as I think of, as I understand that from reading the ordinance, the idea of aesthetics has to do with the aesthetics of a particular placement of a small cell, which I assume has to do with visibility, color, how well it fits into the surrounding environment. But is there any way, given the density that might be at work with some of the, you know, if you think about a carrier deploying a series of small cells across the community, given that there's this trade-off between faster bandwidth and shorter range, do we have any ability as a council to think of the deployment of like a series of cells, like the density of cells within our community as being something that would fit under the category of aesthetics? Or is that not something that we would have the ability to, to weigh in on?
So the, the FCC order covers this idea a little bit. You're, to put it another way, you're kind of thinking of the spacing of facilities? Like how can you have a spacing requirement? Some communities try to, to make sure, you know, you don't have this on every single utility pole or something like that?
Right, yeah, I'm sort of...
Right, it's kind of the clutter.
Right.
So it's a little bit of a fine line. The FCC talks about this, they, they, you know, can't write an order under 100 pages, but they only talked about spacing requirements in a paragraph. And, and all they said is it's sort of like the other aesthetic requirements. They have to be reasonable, it has to be objective, published in advance, and it might be okay. They basically said it might be okay, or it might not, it's gonna depend. So that's their sort of subjective view of how you're supposed to go. So a little bit of this is gonna be sort of trial and error. At the state level, there is the case law that supports your being able to regulate aesthetics in the public right-of-way. They, they, they deal with this a little bit more concretely in the sense that you, you can't, you can try to deal with the clutter sort of aspect of deployments or more lines, but your, your decisions always have to be reasonable and based on substantial evidence, right? So you, you can't, where, where you get caught up is if there's already an area that has a lot of clutter, it's hard to say no more, because we're opposed to clutter. And areas that are more pristine, it's, it's gonna be a little bit easier, which seems unfair in a sense, but it's, it's a very difficult issue, because aesthetics are inherently sort of subjective and sort of thinking of the future. And the FCC is trying to impose on local governments something that, what the carriers have asked for, is that they can basically read your standards and have a good... have asked for is that they can basically read your standards and have a good sense of, to know what they can apply for that would be approved, so.
That, that's really helpful. So, but we, so as I hear you say that, we could in theory set objective, by which I mean quantitative, numerical standards, for the density of deployment of these smaller cells, as long as they're clear and transparent for carriers, without necessarily running afoul of the federal law.
Right. But then if a carrier comes back and say, that doesn't work for our technology and we need to be here or something, then that would be the pushback, yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's very helpful.
Okay, so the, a couple of questions, then we'll go to public comment, because I know a lot of you wanna, wanna speak, and I'll, and I've got some comments afterwards. But on the objective standards part and the urgency ordinance, that is due by, in by April 15th, correct? So if, so if we wanted to enhance what the planning commission has suggested or make any amendments, we'd have to call for a special meeting?
Yes.
Or what would be the process?
Well, we, we could adopt it tonight and we can make changes right now and then adopt it.
Okay. Okay. So, and then just one or a couple of questions for our visiting BBK lawyer. You've, so you've heard the concerns of my, my colleagues here. You've read our draft ordinance, you've read our draft urgency ordinance and resolution. Is there anything that we could, are there any changes, in your opinion, that we could make that would conform or satisfy some of our concerns that you can think of?
The, well.
I know, I know it's a big question, but I mean, are we, maybe I'll, I'll phrase it this way. Are we, compared to all the cities that you work with, does our ordinance, does our ordinance look and feel the same? Have we given it enough scrutiny? Have we taken advantage of everything that, that, that we, that we can under, under a local control premise, in your opinion?
So I think, I think that, I would, I would split it sort of in two categories. On the procedural side, everyone is sort of in the same boat. You have to find a way to evaluate these applications and in these sort of unreasonably ridiculously short timelines. And so everyone's moved to that sort of procedural, trying to do it administratively, simplify it as much as possible. On, on the aesthetic standard sort of side, I think that's where there's, I see a lot more variation. I can't say what, you know, what, every city sort of has their own take, areas they want to protect, their particular concerns. So this, your, your package doesn't seem all that different, it, outside the norm of the variability. One, one advantage, I think, with the, what, the process where, and we're doing this in a lot of cities, where they adopt the standards by resolution, is it gives you, it's easier to change. It gives you more time to come back and make changes. One thing that we haven't heard from too much in this community is, is from the carriers themselves. And in some communities, we have a lot more feedback from, from the carriers, so you may get that, you know, in coming weeks or something. So there, if, if you, if you can tell me what you think you want to do, I, I think there are, I think, you talked about spacing requirements or shortening up the, you know, how often you get reports on RF emissions. I think those are things that you can certainly try out and you'll see with, over time, you know, how the reactions are. Like, we, we, you know, back several years ago, when we put in the every-three-year compliance requirement, there was a lot of pushback from the carriers, but I'm hearing now that they, they are complying, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate it. So let's go to public comment unless there's other questions. Thank you all for being patient. A few speaker slips. If you haven't filled one out, please do. Mr. Nelson, or Ms. Nelson? Ms., I'm sorry. Ms. Nelson followed by Alice Lee. And three minutes if you can state your name and your address if you're willing to do so.
Ooh.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. I have heard of Gail a lot. And I've read a lot of your stuff. So you actually are like a rock star in my world. Believe it or not, I know. I'm sorry. You guys picked somebody, you did a good job in picking somebody, but I would advise you to do one thing, and then I'll tell you my name. Jody Nelson, I live in Walnut Creek, East Bay neighborhoods for Responsible Technology. Make sure that you direct her. As good as she is, you guys are the ones who are making this. And you guys do have some leeway. And push it as far as you can. That's my two cents. But I'm going to tell you about the ADA, which doesn't get discussed a lot. And the, the thing about the ADA is that you may be talking to your attorney and they may have given you some feedback to, about the ADA, but I can assure you that they're looking through it through a narrow lens. And because of that, you are not going to be in compliance. I want to get some, identify some various details you should be aware of. The ADA was created in 1990 during the George Bush administration. Section 704 of the 1996 Telecommunications Act does not preempt ADA compliance. The ADA is not regulated under the FCC or health or environmental issues. This is a civil rights issue. And as it names, as it names state, is a disability is a protection of civil rights for those who are disabled for various reasons. The ADA laws overrule any and all FCC laws and rules. The ADA does not specifically name all the impairments that are covered, and there's a reason. It's because they want this law to cover disabilities broadly without extensive analysis, and that is a legal term. But in September 2002, electromagnetic sensitivity was added to the ADA list. Like smart meters, these frequencies limit an individual from enjoying their lives in homes free of disabling effects, free from added impairment that these frequencies cause to their disability. Without ADA protection, it creates an access barrier to one's home and life. Without this protection, people like me would have no place to go. Which is why you need to fully understand the implications of these small cells in relation to the ADA. In 2016, the Supreme Court looked at how they were considering compliance of ADA laws in response to an earlier Supreme Court decision that significantly narrowed the application of the definition of disability. From this, Congress enacted the ADA Amendments Act to restore the understanding that the definition of disability should be broadly construed and applied without extensive analysis. If you place these cells near a home or facility where individuals with certain disabilities reside, I'm so sorry, this is not, this becomes an access barrier and is not the least intrusive place for a small cell.
Okay.
I, I agree. I, I thank you for your time and, and please, if you have any questions, you can ask.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Speaker, Vice Mayor Anderson?
So Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
I have a question. So what you're suggesting is that we need to actually write something in the ordinance that installations shall comply with ADA requirements? Is that?
The, the thing about the ADA requirements is they have not been specific to this technology.
Right.
So, the only thing you have to go by is smart meters. And in the state of California, they did debate that. And that's why California hasn't opt-out with smart meters. Because people with disabilities needed that. So you can get an opt-out without a disability, but with a disability, you opt-out and you don't have to pay the fees and you don't have to pay the monthly charge because of that. So the ADA did come into play with that. And so we are now in new territory. This is, this is something that I can assure you, you are not looking at in the broad sense. You're, you're looking, when you talk to your attorneys, they're looking at whether a wheelchair can, is going to be able to get around it. But these, it, it's kind of like the incomode, you know? How these things affect us in ways that we can't really see right now. And these are going to go into people's homes. These millimeter waves and the 4G technology will go into people's homes. And right now, I can shut that off, which I do. I shut it off at night and I, and I protect myself from these frequencies. But I will not have that ability with this. And that's where you have to come in at this, with this. And what you should do is find somebody that knows what they're talking about, and that there's not a lot of people that do. So I, I personally, I'm working with the, an ADA advocate who is helping me with this. She is the kind of person that she actually writes law and, and in this area, so she would be able to help more than I can. But I can tell you that, having been working with her, I know that cities are not approaching this very well.
Okay, well, maybe you can give us the name of the person that you have. And you don't have to say it right now, you can give it to staff and we can look into that. I appreciate the perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Speaker? No? Okay, thank you very much. Alice Lee, followed by Nancy Hu.
My name is Alice Lee. I live at 321 Iron Horse Court in Alamo. And I also, with Jody Nelson, represent this group, East Bay Neighborhoods for Responsible Technology. From my address, you know, I live in an unincorporated area of the county. And so deployment of these facilities in my neighborhood is, is governed by the county wireless ordinance. And basically, we've had experience with permits already coming through over the last seven months and been at different levels of appeal. And I'm just hoping to share our experience to the extent that it's helpful to you. And my main point would be to urge you to, to do what you're doing, to delve into every possible way of the, the full extent of local government's power to set limits and guidelines on these before the permits come through. Because that's not what happened at the county level. They did not revise their ordinance and, and through the appeal process, there were people in the planning commission who said, gosh, we think our ordinance should be revised. And, you know, the momentum was difficult to stop at that point. And so these things have been approved and, and the, the scope of the project is important to consider the numbers that you're talking about. The number that was given to Arinda for their area by one carrier was 87. And they've been tight-lipped usually about giving a big number. They always, Verizon always denied any knowledge of a master plan in our area, but it, they are, they've approved 12 right now. And we believe more are coming because these are coming in phases. And so that cumulative effect should be taken into account as you decide what to do. I would urge you to look at the measurements that you're talking about, the frequency of measurements. The county tried to put a condition of approval for annual emission measurements. Verizon appealed that by saying it was unlawful and unenforceable based on the Calabasas case. One item of case law, which the county council said was non-binding. It was in Superior Court, it is non-binding. So you don't have to follow that. You can go more frequently in terms of measurements, and other cities have done that in their And there's a model ordinance available that our group has looked at online that we can make available to you as well, that, that specifies very specific things that you can do to protect Lafayette and its citizens from the full implications and long-term implications of this. We share the concern for, there's no way to monitor the cumulative exposure from multiple carriers at this point. And the FCC's levels are outdated. They're based on 1996 science, which was based on thermal effects of RF radiation. And all the data since then, there's overwhelming amounts of data that, that show effects that are non-thermal. The American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended that safe levels be reevaluated, and that has not truly been done. But I leave these things with you to consider and commend you on the questions that you're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Speaker? Yeah, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Ms. Lee, it'd be very helpful if you could in fact provide us with the model ordinance. I, I think we're kind of under the gun, like the county was, you know? But we have some knowledge, thanks to you and other folks that are here, that we can apply as we either rewrite or adjust things down the road. So if you could pass that information on to staff, that'd be very helpful.
I'd be happy to do so.
Great.
Is there an email or who, who do I?
I think if you walk right over there, they'll either take it from you now or give you an email address or something.
Okay.
So, so the multiple carriers on the same pole, you say there's no way to monitor the cumulative. Don't they have to test, if a new installation comes in, don't they have to test their own equipment? Do they have to test it along with the other, other in, at the same time or not? Do you know anything about that?
I don't know for sure, but my understanding from what I've read is that, because the, it's, it just appears to me that the law says you can't deny, right? The 1996 federal law says you cannot deny placement based on, you cannot deny placement, or local government cannot affect placement, construction, or modification of these facilities to the extent that the, that the emissions are below the FCC's safe limit. So obviously, if the, they are above that, right, you can do something. And so you'll want to measure. But I've heard things about how they cannot be placed on the same pole from different carriers. And so, and so, and, and that law applies to the placement of one facility. So one carrier can test their one facility and say, well, this is under the FCC limit.
Right, that was getting at, right?
Yeah. That's my understanding of it. I haven't asked anyone, but that's what it, how it reads to me. And I feel like, as you're saying, in the homes, something coming from that pole and that pole over there and the other carrier, no one's measuring that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nancy Hu, followed by Caitlin McCormick.
Hi, I'm Nancy Hu. I live at 931 Mountain View Drive Apartment B. So, good evening. I'm a resident of Lafayette since 2012. I have two young kids, you've met them, Erin and Jeremy, three and five. Also a member of the Environmental Task Force, and I also come as part of the La Mirinda Families for Responsible Technology. So like a lot of people have mentioned, I'm very concerned about the aspects of the 5G rollout, including the serious risks to our most vulnerable, which are our children and our elderly. So I know that we can't, under local control, say anything about health concerns, but that doesn't change that there are real health concerns, including brain cancer, leukemia, lymphoma, changes in sleep patterns, headaches, memory impairment, learning disabilities, the list goes on. They're all outcomes from the RF and the microwave radiation that have been proven and documented. Furthermore, it is my understanding that the FCC has let these private wireless companies off the hook for liability of medical issues as a result of these towers, which emit radiation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So I hope our city can construct a responsible policy for the rollout of 5G small tel, small cell towers in Lafayette that protect our community. Like council member Candell had mentioned, looking at other, other cities that are creating ordinances, there's Petaluma, Danville, Mill Valley. They are all, a lot of them are talking about ways to space out the, the towers. One of which, I even saw Walnut City said that, and I encourage this too, is to make sure that there are no 5G telecommunications towers and antennas to be placed 1,500 feet from any school, including nursery, elementary, junior high, and high school, any trail, park, or outdoor recreation area, any sporting venues or residential zones. Residential areas are where people live, sleep, and heal. So the data shows that proximity is a huge factor in risk due to EMF radiation. It isn't until 1,500 feet away from the source that the health risks of exposure equal the risk pool of the general public. I appreciate your careful consideration of this issue. And as a constituent, I just ask that you collectively put your foot down and don't compromise on the values of our community for the benefit of a wealthy industry that is gambling with our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Speaker, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Ms. Hu, I think we're neighbors, so hi.
Hi.
You do realize the example you just told us about was about health effects of this radiation? So the FCC has very neatly built a wall around that issue. So I just want you to, I just want to confirm, that's my question, that you understand that we don't really have a way to make that the reason for doing things. There may be other reasons that we can come up with.
Mm-hmm.
But you, you do understand that?
I do, yeah.
It's kind of forbidden fruit for us.
I do.
Okay. We'll be creative, though.
Thank you.
All right?
Any other questions for the Speaker? All right, thank you very much.
So wait, wait. So you said, is it Walnut City? It was one that said the? So wait, wait. So you said, is it Walnut City? It was the one that said the...
Yes.
And what was their reasoning?
I...
Was it actually health or what was, was it, I'm just wondering if it was something else?
I don't think they put a reasoning on here. Let me look it up. Um...
Maybe we don't put a reason?
I looked at E H Trust dot org and...
E H Trust, okay.
Um, there's a bunch of different cities that have posted parts of their, uh, ordinance that they've approved. And if I look up Walnut City, um, there's also a screenshot of their ordinance from their website. Um, they say telecommunications towers and antennas should not be located within fifteen hundred feet of any school, basically what I said. Um, and then it says to go see the code. They have a, a link. But yeah, I, I can't tell you right now what, if they gave a reason for it.
Okay.
Um, but I saw that that was the, the biggest feat that they, they gave in terms of distance-wise. Some of the other cities that I saw said four hundred feet or two hundred feet away from each other to kind of spread about.
Okay. And I know, I know fire departments have gotten themselves out, right, firehouses.
Really?
They, they were able to get themselves out?
Yes. They have a very strong lobby. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Caitlin McCormick.
Hi. My name's Caitlin McCormick. I live at nine seven two Delores Drive, Unit A. Um, so obviously, we are not able to talk about health impacts or health effects, but we can talk about aesthetics in and of themselves. But there are a couple things with the legislation as we have it written now that I think may be modified. And my biggest health con- or biggest aesthetic concern comes with the stealth facilities. And when we take or define a stealth facility, we're going to take one of these towers and put it somewhere within the community and try and camouflage it as something else. In doing so, individuals don't know if they are by them or not by them. And we're also not, it might take away from the aesthetic impact that we are able to stand upon when trying to fight these from coming in. So if we are able to somehow limit the number of stealth facilities within the community, I don't know if that can be written in some way, or not encourage certain things, like they encourage, uh, people to make them artworks or central landmarks. Um, don't encourage that because then you're just, again, going to negate our entire argument of aesthetics. First of all, art's subjective, so let's not put that on there. And second, as a citizen, people are attracted to art and they're going to want to hang out there. And I don't want to sit next to one of these. I understand that's a health implication, but also plays into the aesthetic aspect of let's put the best hands we can, or put together the best hand. And in doing so, I think we need to remove the Band-Aids they can put on this aesthetics and make them what they are. And then we truly stand on a leg of, I don't want a thousand of these in my community, even if, sorry. Um, you may say I want a thousand pieces of art in my community, but I don't want a thousand EMF towers or five G towers. So, uh, maybe modifying those guidelines with how we approach stealth ones. And then also, I'm adamant about removing stealth from schools. They have no place being next to schools if we can get that litigation of fifteen hundred feet or not in there. But don't hide them. Make people see them. Make them know their kids are there because then you're going to present more of a fight later on. If this comes in, then sure, let's attack the FCC, but we need to have ground to stand on. Uh, Ripon in California, they put up a big enough fight that they were able to get a tower turned off because they had three cases of cancer in the same school. So we need to put forth the best presentation. So make them as ugly as they are so that we can basically use that against our aesthetics. And then what adverse offense come after, we will have to fight those for what they are. But we need to know they're there. People in the community need to know they're there. And that's how we will continue to fight for more progress once, or if implementation does come.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers for the topic? Uh, yes, Ms. Dawson. Come on up if you could. Thanks.
Hello. Uh, Gina Dawson, seven eleven Los Palos Drive. I was just, um, want to thank everybody who's come from other communities and of course, was in our community to talk about this. This is important. Um, I was just thinking of your creative standpoint and, um, two things that came out. Is there any way we could put signage on some of these, uh, towers to say, just a, kind of a warning label per, you know, our standards? Just a recommendation in terms of like, oh, this emits X amount if you're interested, something along those lines, um, of EMF emissions? The other thing is, I think a lot of these are going on to utility poles. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can be creative and say if it is, and PG&E is renting that space, making sure that, um, they're in regulatory compliance with, with the electrical utility, um, uh, code. And that way you kind of make sure that that's the case. So there's no leaning poles also with a five G or four G component to it. Just something to be creative and also kill two birds with one stone that we're increasing maybe the safety of those utility poles as well. Um, even though it's probably an odd balance if you're adding these things back. Anyway, that was just a suggestion on the creative standpoint.
Great. Any questions for the speaker? Okay. Thanks, Ms. Dawson. If you could fill out a speaker slip, that'd be great. Do we have any other speakers? Okay. We'll bring it back to the council. Um, and so from what I've heard, and I'll, I'll let my colleagues weigh in here. I mean, there's been a variety of ideas that have been offered, associated with the, with the urgency ordinance and components to that, and maybe some modifications that we could, we could make to that tonight. Um, and then pass, since it has to be passed before April fifteenth. And then on, maybe then attack the ordinance itself if we want to. Um, and I know Vice Mary Anderson had a couple of questions about that. So those are just my thoughts. Maybe we can, we can discuss the urgency ordinance first. I know Councilmember Bliss had some ideas around those. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, um, and we can all pull it up, pull it up and review it and take a shot at making some adjustments to what the planning commission has already done. And, um, see if we can see consensus on that. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'd ask, uh, if there's any volunteers that would like to sort of go first as I type in my password here.
Well, I, I printed mine out, so I'm ready to go.
Oh, go for it.
Thank you.
Vice Mary Anderson.
Old school. So I, I think ordinance, the ordinance would be the place to deal with things like the density of these units, or would that be in the resolution?
That would be in the resolution.
That would be the resolution. Okay. So that's good.
Because ordinance is short.
Yeah. So the ordinance is one thing. The resol- the resolution's easier to main, to change.
Correct.
The ADA question, is that an ordinance issue or a resolution issue?
Resolution issue too. That would be a resolution.
That's a resolution issue. Okay. So the distance from schools and, uh, other places where there are concerned targets.
Be all in the resolution.
Okay. So generally, these are resolution issues that we're talking about.
Because they are guidelines, objective standards.
Okay. So in the ordinance, I had one thing that I was wondering about. And I don't think there are page numbers here, but I'll see if I can find the section. This is in fifteen oh eight A one, or one, minor modification. D, excuse me, three D. Fifteen oh eight, three D. This is the new section that you've added. It's all red line?
Yes.
And basically, the second of the last sentence, a representative of the project will be expected. Can we require their attendance as opposed to expect them to attend?
Yeah, we can require, yes.
Really?
Yeah. I think the, the concern we may have is if they're not able to attend, then are we planning on denying it? Under what grounds? What would we do if they can't attend?
Well, I'm thinking that maybe then we would have the ability to actually deny it. So I, maybe, or you think that's not?
I'm, I'm just concerned that...
I like the way you think.
For their lack of attendance.
I like the way you think, yeah.
What's that?
I would, I think we'd want more substantive grounds if there was questions that we had specifically that could not be answered from their submittal that required their attendance. That, that would be more, as opposed to them just not being able to attend.
Okay. So what you're saying is that if we had a condition that basically said, if they weren't able to answer our questions, we would have grounds for actual...
If you think of it more in a, in a land use contest, ta- take away the wireless aspect from it.
Right.
If, if we had a, a housing project come forward and we wouldn't just deny it on the basis of the applicant not being able to attend, but that we needed specific, um, concerns addressed. And if the applicant wasn't able to attend, those concerns wouldn't be able to be addressed. That's, that's how I'm seeing it.
Okay. So let me think about that. So I will work on that. All right. The other one I've got is another couple of pages over. It's in fifteen oh nine A D, last section of that red line strikeout where it refers to section six dash fifteen oh eight C three. It says requirements for modification to a wireless communication facility in the public right of way as set forth in section six dash fifteen oh eight C three. Last sentence in the red line. Okay. I believe that should be fifteen twelve C because there's kind of a circular reference that goes back and forth between the two. I know it's just a minute.
Encroachment permit findings?
Maybe we can look into that if it is a correct...
It's just a correction. Basically, read, yeah, that section, it refers you to six dash fifteen twelve C.
I think it's twelve. We'll double check for the correct reference. And I think that, that can be fixed.
Okay. And then fifteen ten B, last sentence right before C, says wireless encroachment permit applications may not be subject to any public hearing requirement. Now, is that a FCC requirement or why is that the case? Why wouldn't that be a public hearing?
So it's, the FCC doesn't require you to go through any particular procedure. It's just a practical matter of the time it takes to notice and have a public hearing and, and the shortness of the shot clock.
Okay. So it's the shot clock is basically forcing us to not allow any public process because that takes more time.
Have a public hearing, yeah. That was the determination. It just couldn't be done. I, I suppose you could have special meetings called or something, but it would, it, it's pretty difficult to meet the shot clock.
Well, it's actually the zoning administrator is doing it. So I, I just thought it would be possible to have a quick meeting to actually have people hear what's going on. But the worry is it would just take too much time. Is that the case?
Yeah. The worry is that it would take too much time and we would not be able to meet the shot clock because the shot clock also has to, um, accommodate any appeals.
Okay. All right. That's all I have on the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thanks. Um, okay. That's on the ordinance. Do we want to go to the, do we want to go to the resolution?
I, I have ordinance.
Yeah, okay. Go for it.
So the... And mine's with the testing. So it's on page, I guess seventeen. Is that, I'm thinking that's with the ordinance. Am I right? Page seventeen of twenty? So on, uh, six, so one five, one three I.
Fifteen thirteen?
Fifteen thirteen, yeah. Standard conditions I. So it's on page seventeen.
Yeah. I've got a little mark there, but that's, yeah.
Right. It says, um, RF emission monitoring, wireless communication facility, facilities, whether operating alone or in conjunction with other facilities, shall not generate radio frequency emissions in excess of the standards, right? So that, I'm assuming that means that we do test them when they're all operating together.
So when, uh, when they are required to submit, when they submit an application and they do their first doing, uh, a, a report to show that the proposed facility, based on their modeling, would comply with the FCC standards, they are supposed to consider, uh, the cumulative impact. So they should be looking at what is in the environment around that facility. And then the report that comes out afterwards, uh, once it's operating, to confirm that it is complying, would also be considering the other, uh, emissions that are in the surrounding area.
All right. And so this one does go on into that. And it says, there'll be an RF exposure report prepared by a professional engineer to the Planning Services Division. Um, do...
That's within one month after construction.
Correct. And so that means that like, I'm just making sure that we, we've captured that. So basically that we put something on, the whole thing has to be tested together, right?
Right.
And that, so you, we think that we've covered that one in here sufficiently.
Yeah. The reports, the, that, uh, that they're supposed to produce are supposed to think of the cumulative. Because if you think about it, you know, the general exposure, public exposure standards, that's assuming you have no knowledge. You're not out there, you know, you know, you don't work in the industry. You're just walking down the street or whatever, right? So it's, it's uncontrolled. They call it uncontrolled exposure. You, you're not, so that's where, if you see on like a macro facility, they'll require that there be fencing around, different things like that, that, that protects, uh, if there are exposures at the ground level. So the answer is yes. Cumulative. It's cumulative.
Right. Um, is there a way, um, for us to, because they, in a lot of their, their documentation, they say they generally follow the IEEE, you know, FCC generally follows these other industry standards. Is there any way for us to say we want to adopt these other industry standards? Since they haven't covered all their bases. I mean, that's the problem. They haven't done it all. They, they try to cover themselves, saying, well, we generally follow these other, the IEEE and, and everything. Is there a way that we can add that to make it just more objective in our own testing?
I, I think any, any attempt to establish any sort of standards at the local level will be met with the challenge that it's preempted by the FCC, um, authority over these, setting these standards.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of other ways to get, um, get the things tested in there that we really do want to get tested, right? The fact that you want to have, since they aim and they pulse, you know, you want to have all of the carriers at the same time doing the same thing. So you're really measuring how the thing is operating. Just wonder if there's any way we can pull in anything better than just saying, oh, an engineer's going to go out there and test it, right? Is there, is there anything more objective that we could put in there to enhance our ability to test it the way we want to test it?
I, I, they, you, you have now that the, it has to be certi- I think certified by an RF engineer. So I mean, that... So you're really measuring how the thing is operating. Just wonder if there's any way we can pull in anything better than just saying, oh, an engineer's going to go out there and test it, right? Is there anything more objective that we could put in there to enhance our ability to test it the way we want to test it?
I, I, they, you, you have now that the, it has to be certi-, I think certified by an RF engineer. So I mean, that, it's a professional test, uh, and so they are.
Can we say under peak operating deci-, you know, like, under peak or the worst-case scenarios? Or, you know, instead of just saying, oh, they go test it, it's like, make sure that they're really testing it when it's really stressing out the system. Is there any way to do that? Like, and have them test in a worst-case scenario?
Well, I know that when they do the, uh, the, the reports, the RF reports that are on the proposed facility, they model it to a worst-case scenario.
I don't want to test to that, too.
Right, so I think of, uh, I, I think that that is probably a requirement that now that they, they would have to test to a worst-case scenario. They couldn't, couldn't not because it, remember, we're talking about, uh, exposures that you are kind of uncontrolled, so.
You haven't seen any other ordinances that contain any, any testing.
I haven't, I haven't seen every ordinance. There's probably one out there, or maybe there's a dozen out there that say something. Um, I, I'm just, uh, I can't think of language that you could put necessarily in the ordinance. It doesn't mean, uh, remember, that when you, you're requiring a report, doesn't mean that if, when a report comes in, you get, you couldn't get it evaluated and determine that it was inadequate, right? That the report needed, uh, to be improved, or they didn't do the testing adequately or something like that. It may require in that instance that the city hire, uh, their own expert to review it. And I mean, the planning staff don't have that expertise. Uh, but that, that's typically the kind of thing I see, uh, done where there are concerns that, um, you know, about the testing that's been done, or they want a second look.
So you don't think we need to add anything to this? We just, when it comes, we.
Right, you might want to have it, you know, have a, at least, uh, at the beginning stages, when you're starting to get these deployments as more new, uh, maybe you'd want to have an RF, uh, expert review the reports.
Okay.
To assist the planning staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Kendall? Okay. Councilmember Bliss?
Yeah, I had two, uh, two thoughts, one sort of a question. So looking at, to come back to this issue of, um, and if this, the council's open to considering this, um, I'm looking for staff and legal counsel's, um, guidance here, too. If we're open to looking at the idea of sort of density of the deployment, spacing between, um, the facilities as one way of getting at this while still conforming with the federal law. It seems like, so if you look at page four of the ordinance, this is section six dash fifteen oh two. Which, and then it's number, let's see. I guess it'd be M one. So it begins, small cell facility, and this is all red line, shall have the same meaning as, et cetera. And then it says the facility, and if I'm reading this right, it looks like, um, items one, uh, small I, and so on, are all basically attaching conditions, um, to the facility in terms of, uh, where it's mounted, um, the height of the mounting structure. It seems like that would be the place to maybe put something like that? Like some sort of quantitative stipulation as to spacing?
That is actually the definition of a small cell facility.
Oh, I see, okay, great.
So I think the spacing requirement should actually go in the resolution, where the objective standards are for how to deploy them.
Oh, great. Where, could you point us to where that?
So that would be the resolution that is attached, resolution, uh, twenty nineteen dash sixteen.
Okay.
So that's, uh, page forty-eight.
So you have the ordinance, the urgency ordinance, and then after that is the resolution in terms of order.
Right, okay.
And we would suggest either, um, including that in the locations for installation under that heading or, uh, design standards for all facilities, either of the two.
Okay. Um, and so I guess my, what follows up, thank you for that, first of all, for clarifying that. So I guess what would fall on that is, we'd be looking at wanting to create, um, something that's quantitative and would regulate the density or what we're calling the aesthetics, um, of the overall deployment. But as I understand it, we couldn't, we need to make sure that whatever standard we set up would not make the network inoperable, right, is what I understood was said earlier. In other words, you couldn't make it so it was non-functional as a deployment, right? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct, but that, it, that's the, the kind of the problem with what the FCC is tasked local governments to do, is you're supposed to make objective standards, but everyone has a different network and needs different locations, so how do you do that? And, and so, uh, it, I think one, one way to approach it is you, you set a standard, and if someone can't meet it, then they, you know, they have to request an exception, basically. Or ask for you to rethink it or reconsider it. But in a vacuum, it's hard, you know, to make. So we were, we, um, we heard that there were, you know, various concerns about spacing issues for the clutter reasons and other aesthetic reasons. And so, you know, we could put something in that would have a spacing requirement.
Yeah, maybe I'd just jump in to, um, execute on some action here. What, under location, that would be under locations for installations?
Either, either that or design standards for all facilities. Those are the two kind of areas. We could do it either way.
Okay, so, um, could we ask for your help in maybe coming up with a sentence?
We were recommending five hundred feet.
Okay, so tell us exactly where you'd put it and exactly what you'd say.
Where, where do you want to put it?
Or Councilmember Bliss, if you, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to override it.
No, 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 you took it exactly the right way.
So, so we, we recommend putting it under the, uh, design standards for all facilities.
Okay.
What page? Okay, wait, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, so it's on page two of six, and it would be on three of six, number thirteen. Would be spacing, or I don't know how you want to word it.
Yeah, I think you can just call it spacing of facilities.
Okay, so it would go under design standards for all facilities, and it would be a new number?
Number thirteen, yes.
Number thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
And what exactly would, um, and it would be spacing?
Right.
And then what would we, what would we say?
So the, the issues here, so we're talking about the public right-of-way. So sometimes, uh, locality say, you know, like a linear distance, but that, you, or the alternatives are sort of a linear distance or sort of in the radius. Because sometimes you have streetlights on one side of the street, you have utility poles on the other side of the street. So those, those, you could say, uh, uh, spacing requirement of, you know, there should be only, you know, no more than one facility within, or, um, I don't know if you'd say no more, you, uh, there should be a minimum space of five hundred, you know, within a five hundred foot radius, no more than one facility within a five hundred foot radius. Or you could say, uh, five hundred linear feet along the right-of-way. Those are sort of the two formulations. That I see.
I could say there could be no, located no closer than eight hundred feet of another cell.
You could say it like that, yeah, and then that would be, that would be either way.
It may be.
Mm-hmm.
Eight hundred or five hundred?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, okay.
So are we, are we good with eight hundred? Or, I mean, we're.
Yeah.
I think thi- this is all subject to waivers.
Okay.
Yeah, because you were talking about four hundred feet, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that it's five hundred to one thousand, and you're splitting somewhere kind of in there.
Seven fifty.
There'd be a minimum spacing of eight hundred feet.
Minimum spacing between facilities of eight hundred feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, minimum spacing in a facility, okay.
Is, is that, would that be per carrier or?
That'd be per facility.
People would be allowed to co-locate?
Well, yeah, you could co-locate because that would be one facility. I mean, that's why, that's why I read the definition, right? If you co-locate, that's one.
Facility.
Facility, is that correct?
Yes.
Am I mixing my definitions? I'm getting a.
You're not mixing your definition.
So the FCC, in its wisdom, has two definitions of co-location. So, well, they now say if you want to place a wireless facility on an existing structure, that's a co-location, even if it has no wireless on it. Uh, but separately, they also say it's co-location if there's an existing wireless facility and you want to add wireless to it. So if you put, uh, that there should be a minimum spacing of eight hundred feet between wireless facilities just writ large, I think that would cover, that wouldn't prohibit co-location.
Right, co-location can still occur, but.
Any, both types of co-location.
But they would not be any closer than eight hundred feet.
Right, right. So, yeah, the, the balance here where there are spacing requirements is sometimes the pole that gets picked gets kind of cluttered, but the, that's also dealt with, uh, in the other requirements, uh, for the aesthetics and the design.
See, this isn't that hard.
Okay. So, yeah, so I think we're, are we all good with that one?
Yeah.
You just shake your head, that'd be great, okay. Go back to Councilmember Bliss, has another one?
Yeah, and just, this is kind of jumping way back now to like, the whereas's of the, uh, ordinance. Um, and this is wordsmithing, I realize, but I really, um, you know, this is, these, when we adopt these ordinances, they're sort of our statement as a council of our view of the world and sort of why we're doing what we're doing. And so, and I'm not going to like push for this too hard if people think I'm just being grumpy. But, um, if you look at the whereas's where it talks about, um.
Which one is it?
Sorry, it's the, on ordinance.
It's the urgency.
Six seventy-three, which I think.
Oh, six seventy-three, that's the other one.
That's the main.
Well, I'm going to suggest the change to both, because I think it's in both. Bear with me here, sorry.
Okay, six seventy-four we need to do tonight.
Yep, let me get to that one.
Six seventy-three is, we've got time, second reading.
I think it, I think it applies to both, hold on a second. Yeah, six seventy-four then, thank you.
Which whereas?
Although it'll apply to both, it'll be one, two, it's the fourth.
Fourth?
Whereas.
Yeah.
It's a different whereas than the first one, but it says, whereas significant changes in federal laws that affect local authority over wireless communications facilities have occurred, et cetera. I want to change effect to limit. So I want to specifically say that significant changes in federal laws that limit local authority over. And I know it's not a substantive change, but I think, again, these are our.
Cool.
Statement of our views of the policy context as we see it, and I think that's an important change. And if you go back to, I know we're not doing this one tonight, but just, for, on six seventy-three, I think it's the second whereas, there's the same phrasing. So I just, I think it's, the more we've learned about these FCC, these new regs, I think it's important for us to stipulate that we see them as limiting, not just affecting local authority. So this would be, um. In six seventy-three, this is.
Third whereas, I believe.
Uh, yeah, there's the third whereas. That's it, that's all I have.
Okay. So it's a third whereas, it's, it's verba-, verbatim, right? Six seventy, six seventy-three.
Just changing effect to limit.
Changing effect to limit, okay. Okay. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Geringer, did you have any, or?
Turn it back on. So, I know Councilmember Candell was reading in that same area about the requirements and the testing and, um, on compliance with that. And so I'm not seeing it, and it could be, my eyes are crossing, in the, um, resolution on, um, where we would be able to even have a discussion about adding in. I know it's one month after construction, and I assume that happens every time anybody built, installs a new thing in that location, every eight hundred feet, and then every three years from that. Um, but that's in the ordinance, right, not in the emergency resolution? So I don't know.
It is in the emergency, it's in the emergency ordinance and the regular ordinance, but not in the, uh, standards.
Okay, thank you. And so then I guess, does it change anything for us? And does it make sense to have it be in the standards as we're going forward? Or will we have an opportunity, when this comes back to us for review and looking at model ordinances and things like that, to look at that? So do we want it to be more often? Do we gain anything, uh, from that?
That's a good question, I figured.
It's in here, it's in the ordinance.
Okay, well.
I was going to say, while we're doing that, I know, I think Vice Mayor Anderson might have also been, um, asking to look at the, maybe everybody was, but, um, the distances from schools.
Yeah.
And I don't, I'm happy, of course, to have us look at adding it in tonight in the urgency. Um, I don't know about the whole, because I haven't seen the language from the city of Walnut, but the, um, I think what Nancy Hu had said was fifteen hundred feet from schools, trails, you, everything, and I'm wondering if at least we start in the place of, uh, schools and where the, where the council is on that, or where, um, the attorneys are on that.
Yes, I have a question for, uh, our legal.
Yeah.
Staff, the idea.
I thought it seemed a lot for us to consider tonight, but maybe schools and preschools, things like that.
So what, uh, one of the concerns would be on what basis, if we were thinking of, that this is for aesthetic regulation, is there aesthetic? You know, there was a, um, you know, ban in certain areas where, of the city, where it was like this decorative streetlights and things like that, but, so it would be subject to some risk, obviously, if, legal risk, if you were to impose a ban that was just related to, um, schools, unless you had a justification that had something to do with aesthetics.
So the one thing I was looking at was the ADA question, and maybe that gives.
I did see that, that was my second.
A little angle.
Yeah.
And we have a statement in here already, in the, in the resolution. This is under design standards five.
Right, I saw them.
Maybe what we want to do is kind of pop that out, either in its own statement or put it at the beginning, I don't know, just to make it.
And don't just talk about it without, in, um, interferes with emergency operations of pedestrian or vehicles, make it more about disabilities.
That's what I'm saying, either make its own number or put it at the top and then let the other ones fall behind it, I don't know. But that might be easier for, you know.
In terms of schools and impact on, yes, thank you.
You, you follow me?
Yes, I do, thank you.
So, I mean, I could, we could either flip it or make it another section, doesn't matter.
Whatever.
I, I would suggest making it another section, actually, but. I don't know, staff, if you've got, or Mike, if you've got an idea on specific language?
Well, it's here.
And just, just carve, just carve it out?
Yeah, just add it, yeah, you've got it right here. So five says a wireless communication facility shall not be located within any portion of the public right-of-way that interferes or may interfere with the city in emergency operations or pedestrian and vehicular access. Next paragraph. All wireless communication facilities and associated equipment in public right-of-way shall comply with Americans with Disabilities Act ADA requirements.
And why does that have to only be public right-of-way?
We could change that.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a comment? Does, do we have a legal comment on?
On making that number six?
So do.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So we have two things on the table still, right?
Right.
It, it doesn't have to be just public right-of-way, but I believe that the, these standards are applying only to the public right-of-way.
They're applying only in the public right-of-way?
Yeah.
ADA requirements?
look at it again and find out about the other ordinances and things like that, thank you for asking. And then I guess the other, yeah.
Yeah, the, the question about, um, the standard condition that says that the, there will be an administrative review at three-year intervals, it's actually in the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
So, we can certainly change that to annual review, if, if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, let's go to annual.
Annual.
Thank you.
We got the school stuff.
Okay, my question is one of administration here, when we, when we make, when we come to a motion, are we gonna have to call all of these out specifically, or is staff confident that?
We've, I think we're confident that we've captured the changes, I'm looking at Pyle, and she's nodding, so I think it's-
My blood pressure, my blood pressure is going up a little bit, so.
So, I think if, if you are ready at some point-
You're too young for that, what are you doing?
It's going to be, um, you know, adopting the urgency ordinance as amended tonight-
Okay.
A- as well as, um, introducing the, uh, traditional ordinance as amended tonight, and adopting the resolution as amended tonight.
Okay, um, I have an idea on ordinance six seven-three.
Okay.
Maybe I'll just pose it, since we're not under the, or maybe we are, and I'm just, I'm blanking on it here, under the gun to introduce it tonight for, and then move it for its second reading on April twenty-second, is that we form a commit, uh, committee, and have that committee meet and possibly get you on the line, and kind of go through it, take a look at this, perhaps this model ordinance that was suggested earlier in the evening, and, and to kind of go through it, I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that tonight here, and then bring that back on April twenty-second for the, for the first reading. Um, I would just pose that, timeline-wise, is that, is that acceptable?
The second, so the second reading would be delayed.
Second, yeah, the second reading would be delayed.
Hearing April twenty-second might be an aggressive timeframe, that we may want to do it farther back.
I miss, I'm sorry, Mal, I missed the first part.
Oh, that it may be aggressive to meet the April twenty-second timeframe. I think, I think what you're suggesting is, is appropriate, it's just that the timing of when we introduce the ordinance may be aggressive, in order to accomplish all of that.
Yeah, we'd have to bring it, we'd have to bring it back on April twenty-second.
Right.
Introduced on April twenty-second.
Yeah, it would be introduced on April twenty-second.
So, I, I think we would suggest, if you want to do that, is moving forward with the urgency ordinance and resolution, but pushing back, uh, not bringing it back on April twenty-second, maybe bringing it back in May.
Yes, yeah, the, the, the urgency ordinance and resolution, we would hopefully agree on tonight and pass, but on ordinance six seven-three, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear, on six seventy-three, we would introduce that on April twenty-second after the committee met.
No, I think we're thinking that's too aggressive to make that deadline, it's too quick.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to be able to accomplish all of that-
Well, we, okay, well, okay.
Functionally this week, right?
Got it, so-
To do that.
Go ahead, Pyle, you, yeah.
No, that's exactly what I was trying to say, 'cause we'll have to reconvene these, this week, to be able to publish next week, and be on the twenty-second.
Okay, so we can, we can push that back to May, first me- first meeting in May.
We could continue it to a date certain, whether it be May thirteenth, or, as long as we've got the urgency ordinance in place, we're covered, so-
That's, that was the resolution.
So, that's what I'm saying, is that we have more time.
Okay.
And so, we don't need to rush to, to get the, the introduction of the ordinance, especially if you're thinking you want to do some more substantive changes.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking, and I'll just look to my colleagues if that, let's just tackle, let's just talk about ordinance six seventy-three, and pushing that back, and forming a subcommittee to tackle that. Is everybody on board with that idea, and pushing back the introduction of that ordinance to sometime in May, maybe the first meeting in May? Having the subcommittee meet during that time, and utilizing our council, um, to answer questions, okay. Second, is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, so the second question is, who would like to be on that subcommittee? Okay, Councilmember Candell and Vice Mayor Anderson, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we need a motion or voting on that or anything?
We're just checking to see if Gail is available, I didn't know if you would want her to attend, it would be the, the May thirteenth meeting? She is not available, which, so, I don't know if you wanted Gail to be able to attend.
Yeah, I think, I think we probably would.
Yeah, it'd be good.
May twenty? Twenty-seventh is Memorial Day, otherwise, June tenth?
So, if we get the courtesy ordinance in place, the timing on this is not critical, so that's good, we got time today.
If it's, if it's all right, I know it's a little bit out, but, uh, would June twenty-fourth work, Gail would be able to attend?
I mean, my personal feeling is we should do this right, so, I, I'm, I'm fine with that date, if the subcommittee's fine with it.
That's a city council meeting, right?
That'd be a city council meeting.
Yeah.
Because we would be introducing the regular ordinance, and, and to the extent, um, if there were significant substantive changes, then we would need to go back to planning, Planning Commission.
Sure.
So, that might give us, you know, time to-
Okay, so, I think we're good on, on six seventy-three. So, now if we go back to the urgency ordinance and resolution, we've made some changes, um, the staff feels comfortable with those changes that we've made, do we have additional changes that we want to make, 'cause we've, this is our only shot at it tonight?
I, I'd be happy to move adoption as modified.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, so do we have further discussion? No, okay, so we'll go ahead and call the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, it's unanimous? Thank you very much to staff.
And so, was that for the urgency ordinance, and so the resolution as well?
Yes, do we have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And that's as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. You guys are detail-oriented.
All right, we have a motion, uh, on the, as amended, we have a second from Councilmember Geringer, any discussion? Okay, I'll call a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
And then lastly, if we can have a motion to continue the public hearing of the traditional ordinance to June twenty-fourth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous on that as well. All right, have we done everything there? Great.
A lot of damage.
Thank you very much to all of you, very, very much. Okay, um, items removed, consent calendar, we did not have any, council commission reports, anybody like to, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, as mentioned earlier by the city manager, uh, Councilmember Candell, Geringer, and myself, and Mr. Vatza, all attended the mayor's conference, uh, there was a very good presentation on rats and other vectors.
And mosquitoes, and-
And mosquitoes.
And ritters.
And when we got past that, we got into a real interesting conversation about MTC, the Casa Compact, it was very good, dinner that followed afterwards, the, the discussion continued, so it was a really very good meeting, and I think we got a lot of connections, and a lot of, you know, eye contact with other cities who are interested in pursuing this thing, so-
Thanks for going.
There's a lot of, there are a lot of good, uh, ground was covered there.
It's a great showing for our city, that's great. Okay, any others? Okay, um, I've got a few, first, um, so, for our CCC, CTA, um, liaison representatives, given the, the nature of the meetings on, I believe they're two, on Tuesday mornings at nine-thirty.
Thursdays.
Thursday, sorry, to get the Ts mixed up, um, are, it's very, very difficult for working council members to make those meetings, which I completely understand, so, um, what we've done, or what I've done, is I've asked former Mayor Tatsin, this is, this is a liaison position, does not require a council member, uh, to, to fill the role, um, and Mr. Tatsin, former Mayor Tatsin, actually approached me before he left the council and said, hey, I'm willing to help any way I can, so, anyways, I did ask him if he'd be willing to fill the role, he got permission, um, and he's willing to do it, so, um, gone ahead and asked him to do it, hopefully everybody's okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, second one is, um, I know there's not many people here, we're gonna adjourn in a minute, we're not gonna adjourn, we're gonna move to closed session in a minute, but I will, when we come back, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting in honor of Don Black, who was the first mayor of Lafayette, who recently passed, so I just wanted to, to have that on the record here, um, and I understand from our communications analysts that, um, Jeff Hayman, that Jeff did a, did a video, an interview of former Mayor Black, that he's gonna have, uh, published on our YouTube site or the city site sometime this week, so we'll get that out, I think that should be really fun, um, to, to listen to, and interesting. And finally, I have a statement to make, there's nobody here, so I'm just gonna read it, that way it'll be, it'll be on-
But there's people here.
It'll be on the, I know, I'm sorry. That is so rude. That is so rude. That is so rude, I apologize, I'm so sorry to both of you, um, gosh, I know, and like two very important people, personally to me, oh my gosh.
You've got media, and you've got-
I'll tell ya, I, I apologize, um, so, uh, worst, worst kept secret in town here, heavy heart, big time for me personally, I'm announcing tonight that I'll be stepping down as mayor, uh, effective, uh, April twentieth, um, but I will remain on the city council, um, as a council member, and I will complete my four-year term, uh, on the council, um, and it's just been, I'll just say, it's been an incredible, uh, short time, about four months, four and a half months, um, it seemed like longer, but I've just really cherished the time with the community, and I'm, I'm grateful. Um, I have been given a very unexpected tremendous opportunity in my professional life, that's the reason for this, and I, I want to be clear on that, and it would be a disservice to the community if I were to remain as mayor, delivering to the position in the community anything less than a hundred percent around commitment and effort, so that's why I have chosen to do this. In addition to, and this is most importantly in my life, the ability to spend time with my family, so with a new position comes a lot of commitment, and, um, you know, we have some critical time with my kids and my wife, and I'd like to, like to take advantage of those years, and those are the, those are the two reasons that I'm, that I'm doing this. Um, like I said, you know, and then, then there's no more important value, I think, than being a good and loving dad and spouse, I think, um, priority-wise, I'm, I believe in that very strongly. So, I've really cherished my time over these past few months, uh, grateful for the community, for, for putting your trust and confidence in me and having a ton of coffee with me, um, you know, we came off a turbulent election, election period, and I think we all really tried to bring some positivity to, uh, our jobs, and all, all five of us, I think, have done a really good job as a, as a team, while still maintaining our independence, uh, in the way we vote, and how we debate, and then how we move on and tackle the next issue, in always the best interest, uh, to the community, and that's a Lafayette tradition that I've see, I've seen continue here over the last four and a half months, and I've just been proud to be a part of it, um, sitting just in this seat, and we're all in the same seat, we're all, we're all equal here, so, um, you know, I think we've accomplished quite a bit over the last four and a half months, just, just thinking back from, you know, our open space purchase, to, um, you know, where we're moving, perhaps in the flavor tobacco product, uh, area, to a lot of other issues, we've, we've done a lot over the last four and a half, five months, and I, I do believe the strategies and the objectives that we're gonna deliver will make an impact on the city, I do believe that concentrating on what's happening in Sacramento, in terms of protecting our local control, is, is really something that we're all kind of banded together on, uh, in a smart, in a smart way. Um, so, you know, in addition to thanking, truly thanking our residents here personally, and our business community, which I've gotten to know very, very closely, and it's just been a real privilege to, to get to know, um, our, our commerce, uh, area of town, um, I'd like to especially thank interim city manager Narup, interim city attorney Malap, and our city clerk, Joanne, um, and the entire staff, I, Tracy's here, obviously, and Greg's here, and, uh, just the entire staff has been, um, fantastic, and I, you just, you, you take on a role like this as a volunteer, you don't know what to think, I'm new at this still, and you have this support structure behind you that has been fantastic, and there are, they are so, I just want to say this one more time, they are so devoted to this city, to the people of this city, that it's just, it's unreal, they come to work every day, I've spent a lot of time in the office, with a positive attitude, and they deal with complex, incredibly complex issues, and they do it fairly and transparently, and I've never once questioned the integrity of our staff, never once, um, and I'm, I'm just, I've just been really, really proud to work together with all of you, so thank you, thank you very much. Um, so with that, I think, um, I'd like to just thank my colleagues, um, and for your support, and, um, I will, uh, again, like I said, serve as mayor, uh, until April twentieth, and then at our next meeting on April twenty-second, um, we'll agendize, uh, what we need to, to move forward in terms of leadership on the, on the council, that's appropriate to, to say. So, that is my announcement for the evening, and that is all I have, so, okay, is there any other, uh, comments, or, um, things that we wish to agendize for future meetings before we go into closed session? I think, I think we did want to bring the Townsend matter back, we have, we have that one, um, and I think that is it, any others? No? Okay, all right, with that, let's, uh, go ahead and move into closed session, and we'll come out and report on closed session when we're finished, thank you. And if we, yeah, let's take a two-minute break, or a five-minute break, if you need to.
I wish there were a way you could make this work, Cam.
Oh, thanks. I'll still be here, it's just a different seat.
We just need to clone you.
Thank you for pushing this so hard in the first four months until April twenty-second.
That's, that's the time for that, yes, you did so well, yes, you did.
Thanks for doing this.
It's, it's all right, man, it's all right.
Out of gratitude.
You got your priorities in the right place.
So, where'd you get those sodas from?
You know, we buy them, we get them at Whole Foods, and they're on, you know, Amazon discount, you get a, you get a great, great deal on them.
Okay.
And they're, it's just water.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
With flavor.
With a little flavoring, yeah, okay, all right.
Well, unless-
Can we stop? Yes, I get a recording this, yes.
So, what are you doing here?
No, no. I'm closing.